Okay, my fault the November 1st, 2021 Exeter Town Council Regular Meeting Order. Please take the roll.
Dan Patterson.
Yeah.
Michael Faye.
Yeah.
Hello.
Here.
Maybe Francisco.
Here.
Hi, Mark. Here.
Okay, next up the Republican out there. First, Lisa Davis.
Okay, so I have two topics. First, in the spirit of accuracy, I'll admit when I say something wrong, so first make correction. I said last meeting that assault should be legal because it wasn't, rather, proof didn't have an impervious base and didn't have an unlawful possession. It turned out Mike had an impervious base according to the invoice paid by the town party in the under of 2018. Unfortunately, this doesn't change anything since, as we know from the basketball court, it's also illegal to pay wet man setback areas without affirmative. I'm starting to get a sense for why the council doesn't get bothered on the DPW after it's been straightforward with council, DDM, or the public. When those people play fast and loose with the truth, it doesn't matter much. Luckily, thanks to the open records, we can go back to the original documents to figure out what went on happening. After last one's meeting, I took a look through the ethics handbook to better understand what Olivia was talking about. It looks like Gina's okay since her farm didn't get any special favoritism and the funds came from the state, not the town. I did find some other interesting things. Turns out all the old ethics opinions and actions have publicly available on the same website. Olivia mentioned her dad got fined $750 for wanting to donate his time for the town. Here's a copy of that decision. That's not what happened at all in that county. Sorry. First, the ultimate fine was $250, not $750. Second, and more importantly, it wasn't because he wanted to donate engineering time for the town. It was because while on the council, he asked Cal to nominate his company for the shortlist of town requalified engineers so he could be awarded work without going through an audit. Cal did it, and he was added to the list. Usually in a situation like this, both people get in trouble, but for some reason, in this case, only Mike did. Also, it's part of the decision he agreed not to run to the council. Sometimes what's interesting in public records is what you don't find, like in this case, a decision regarding Cal. The ethics rules also have a couple pages that talk about nepotism. The Ethics Commission in this case works like the IRS or like the DPM and like other government agencies where the best thing to do is to file your stuff on site. If not, then file it late of your own accord. But the worst is when somebody else complains, then the headaches start. That's what happened with the DPW garage or DPM, or in this case with Mike, somebody else filed the ethics complaint. So the other thing missing from the public record is an advisory opinion to Olivia. The ethics code has two pages devoted to nepotism. And Olivia and Mike meet both of the definitions for any pipeline and living in the same house. In a case like this, probably on 2B on page 13, Olivia should have notified the Ethics Commission already before taking office, taking steps to distance herself from their action and not participating in discussions regarding budgets or other planning board items. In this case, the Ethics Commission wasn't notified, otherwise they'd be a public advisory opinion. She was appointed the Planning Board Liaison while the daddies chair, and the meeting minutes don't show her refusal from budget discussions. An issue like this has the potential to throw a lot of town business into disarray and create significant legal liability since decisions that involve both the planning board and town council can be contested for ethical reasons. This include, could include my proposals to finish a state drive for the revenue project or the Sharona proposal and more others. Since, like Olivia said last time, we're all friends here and we don't want to get people in trouble, and since I stole the right of way that runs across Mike's yard that'll probably need to reopen this spring, I'd suggest Olivia contact the Ethics Commission soon to get their opinion on the record because if somebody else does it for her, the disciplinary consequences will get worse and more expensive for both her and the town. Next, on the DPW. A few months ago, I recommended the town hire an independent investigator to sort out that mess, and I gave you the names of three current or former state police members. At the time, I said specifically Marusak shouldn't do it since he's been involved and conflicted since the start. Dan, this goes to the dangers of having somebody else write draft affidavits and sworn statements because in yours, to the Attorney General dated October 4th, number seven, Usain Marusak was first involved starting July 7th of this year. This was a sworn signed statement he made to the Attorney General, and I believe Marusak said something similar in his response. Thanks to the town's own legal billing records, we know this isn't true. He's been billing the town on this matter since October 2019, a month after we first heard about it. So now you're on record as making a false statement to the Attorney General. And the council minutes, it looks like the last time we had a town ethics training was November 2019. Maybe it's time for another one. Last one is the latest installment of ATV riders, dirt bikers, dog walkers, and others using the public street right of way at the understate drag division property. Last time we had Mark Vannichelli, this month we have one neighbor Hal. This month is shorter thanks to some dead camera batteries, but that problem's been rectified, so expect next time to have faculty back for a usual. Thank you.
Okay, next up, acknowledgements and announcements. Anybody have any acknowledgements and announcements?
I just would like to speak to the fact that Brian Daniels has been executive director for a number of years for legal cities and counties, has left and taken another position. In my opinion, and what we've seen of his performance at the league, it's been exceptional, outstanding. He's kept us very well notified on comes and goings, and he's been a real advocate for cities and towns. So I think on our behalf, we should wish him well and thank him for his service as executive director of the League of Cities and Towns.
Can we send you the face credit?
Oh, we could. I'm moved that we...
He's been very thorough for the last couple of years.
He certainly has. I'm moved that we direct clerk Hawkins to send a lot of appreciation and wishes to Brian.
A second, if you're... Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Let's see. Approval of the agenda order?
I'm moved for it to be approved as presented.
Second, anybody?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of the consent agenda. Okay, we gotta pull a few off later. Approval on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I was gonna go through one by one at a certain time.
Okay.
Mr. President, there's one item on the consent agenda that I'd like to be heard on.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna pull yours, but Mr. Harsh.
There's one voucher on the... Anybody have any reports?
I'd like to move the library to...
And communications, I've got number one.
Yes, seven, eight, eleven, thirteen, please.
Additional fourteen for those already listed.
Olivia, you ready?
Anything's been pulled.
Okay, right.
All set.
In the minutes, Olivia was not here September 7th. And you do not have October 1st.
So license.
So Italy is all set. You can pull any of those. Don't care already, you can pull FNG. Do you want to discuss it now or we only done consent?
Two girls can do this now. Give the thing down.
Dealer junk, you just pulled Seth Raymond, we got no application there, so we really don't even need to make a motion on it. We're getting over your application, so please not renew it apparently. Not the done.
Secondhand dealers.
Twisted throttle is, there is no application because they're doing all the online work now. So that's another one that we don't need to make a motion with. Recycling, all set.
Let's do that.
Trail park. They're all set on a snorkel slip rock. So that's on you.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. It's a good license.
I would like to address that when we get to the end of this, let's say, please.
The rubbish, the only ones, refurbished services, we have not received a notification from them. And...
I'm going to pull, and I'm going to recuse myself from having one and two.
And private detectives, and they are all...
And now we need approval of the consent agenda as amended.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, so Cal, you want to do the, you want to do the rental charter cross?
Well, you told that and you saw it approved.
That's approved, okay. Exeter Public Library, that'll be at the end of the meeting. Communications end of the meeting. Approval of minutes, we need to do a motion for... Motion of approve the council regular meeting of September 7th, 2021.
I'm moved that those minutes be approved as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Ethan G. Sadowing, you want to give a that now or go back to it? Okay, you're up, Mr. Harsh.
I'm gonna ask my colleague, Mr. Davio, to address the council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good evening, President. I'm with the council. My name is Christopher Davio. Representation.
You worked for DPW, didn't you?
I certainly did. I was...
You got hurt, right?
Yeah.
Bumped cigarettes off me.
Thankfully, I quit that. I thought, oh, you were gonna set the designer, or install.
Designer and install.
Well, there you go, so...
We both got gray hair.
Yeah, when I left the state, I had no debt, health care, every day, every year I got a raise, and now I'm a lawyer and I'm in debt. Not sure it would be the right choice, but nonetheless, I was an environmental scientist for the state of Rhode Island. I told...
On the record, it's probably been 30 years since I seen him, so...
Yeah. Yeah, so Christopher Davio represents James Pond Realty. It's the property just adjacent to and just east of the FNG facility. We're here this evening to object to licenses under consideration by the town council issuing to the auto salvage license. So if you received a packet of these, and it may have been reminisce, but we'll try to give you an overview on that. Just want to start off with that. As you know, and I'm sure your solicitor would advise you, your fundamental responsibility, maybe your most sacred duty as a town council, is to protect the public's health, safety, and general welfare. A reaction you take should be in furtherance of that, right? Indeed, suspect you take that responsibility very seriously. We're here tonight to discuss how the FNG facility is in fact endangering the public's health and safety and general welfare by the mishandling and discharging of contaminants. Now, the first information that I gave you provided somewhat of an overview that this town council is not new to auto salvage auto even FNG in terms of its problems. In 2000, when FNG came for its first license, December of 2000, was a renewal license they were applying for, withheld, or I should say, was directed to be granted, but not issued until the junkyard was cleaned up, previously directed by the town council. Then there was a problem out there in 2000. 2004, there was also a hesitancy, reluctance by the town council to issue licenses until any pending remediation of the community environment was corrected. 2015 and 2017, my co-councilman, Mr. Harsh, approached this, the town council, complaining about FNG's activities getting over onto James Pond's property. That's the first issue I wanted to discuss. The second issue is DDM, okay? So DDM has issued three notices of intent to violate, a notice of intent to enforce violation. Well, three of them, and I've done a records request and reviewed, talked to the DDM staff, people I used to work with, Madison, they were my pal at one time. None of those, none of those notices were ever remedied, including the most recent in July of 2021. It has not been responded to.
The ones from '17 and '18?
Correct.
Didn't do anything?
Correct. Yes. And part, part of what the reasoning was, the one in 2018, COVID came, and they couldn't get to it, and like, you know, whatever. I can say this as an ex-DDM employee, I would go out and inspect septic, or complain for septic system failure. And I look at the file, and I say, holy mackerel, there's 10 years worth of people calling about this cesspool family. Why hasn't it been corrected? This is, and no, and I have no slight to my, my colleagues, it's a lack of resources, sometimes a lack of, of the ability to perceive and enforce. But I can tell you now, the one in July of 2021 has not been responded to. And they're going out to do another inspection. That was for water resources. This one's going to be done under the RICRA. RICRA is when you discharge, when you've got oil or any pollutant, you discard, that's a, you're discarding hazardous materials. You're not allowed to do that. The third point that I want to raise, and I have my, my expert, Mr. Nicholson here, who's a fact witness, that is, he's someone who's been out on the site, has seen the mishandled contaminants, discharging, not just on the FNG facility, but onto, onto James Pond's property. That's the general welfare component, the health and safety issue to our property, but their property is being degraded because of this. And he can testify to what he's tested, what he's seen.
It's going over to the other problem.
Yes.
The oil.
Absolutely. Okay. You pick, there's pictures in there. I don't know if you, if, I'll, I'll, I'll let you pass this around.
Let me have it.
Color photographs?
It's a circle, like a whip.
Yeah, these are color photographs which, which clearly show the, the snow water running onto the property and the contaminants that are, that are found. It's like oil slugs. Mr. Nicholson will talk to mine, okay? Lastly, I want to point out why this is important, not just to James Pond's property. FNG sits over a sole source drink and water supply. GAA is just the highest quality water that you can, you can qualify groundwater. FNG sits over it. It's unconfined, which means that it's not confined with ledge and let, it is going, there's no place for the containers to go. It goes down or runs off. When it goes down, it's going into your drink and water supply, which then eventually migrates eastward underground, but a general groundwater flow from Moose Neck is heading towards Beaver Road. That's affecting your general welfare of your community's drink and water supply. Now, normally, if you were to try to get a permit today for a junkyard, first of all, the regulations require it's supposed to be in a building. So if you're dismantling your poking holes and all the spots of a car that oil, it drops down, you're inside a building, you're on an impervious surface with berms so that the stuff collects, and you can go into a catch basin, you know, drain in your shop, and you can collect it. Out there, it's just out in the open, out in the dirt. When it rains, it's just flowing all over the place. The, the, the sampling results that Mr. Nicholson has taken exceed safe health conditions for TPA, total petroleum hydrocarbons, which is gasoline, oil, typical things you would think that come out of, out of a car being crushed, and lead, exceeding safe water. Well...
Batteries, a lot, a lot of components.
Are we taking test, excuse me, I represent FNG. We taking testimony now? I know the gentleman's making a statement. I'd like an opportunity to respond, but I think it's improper to be having this gentleman suddenly piping up with answers, putting in documents before you that haven't been properly authenticated. I'm Timothy Dodd, I represent FNG. So when he gets done, I'd like an opportunity to respond to correct the misstatements that he's made. Yeah, so we're not in court of law here, right? Probably in front of the zoning board, planning commission, and I was in front of the CRC. Mr. Marusak can tell you, the rules of evidence are not meant to be strictly adhered to as if we're in a court of law, okay? So you can take the weight intuitively. If you are crushing cars on open dirt surface, where do you think the contaminants go? Just, just, take a, take a, you don't need an expert to say it. Just use your common sense. When you have a leaky car in your driveway, where does it go? It goes in your driveway, straight down to the ground, washes off. You ever go to a, 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 a combine farm or even a grocery store after it rains? Where are engine parts? When you see that purpley, blue sheen, that's oil and gas dripping from your car, brake fluid, transmission fluid. You don't need to be rocket scientists, you don't need an expert to understand that concept. This facility does not have a dedicated pad where they are doing their, their salvaging work. That's why it's running off all over the place. So, Mr. Nicholson, I just would like you to briefly describe, and look at, he can just let him talk. I'm checked. This is, is this comment or is this the, is this the hearing? We are presenting our objection to the town council on giving them evidence or information, both what they have noted on this facility, what DDM has noted on that facility, and what our experts do on the facility. Before you start, if you want to discredit his credibility, go ahead.
I wanted to ask you your opinion, Jack.
I agree with part of what, I want something from Mr. Davio said, that is, it's not a court of law. You don't have to go by the rules of evidence, but what we do abide by usually is the rule of fairness, and one of those is giving the other side the opportunity to cross-examine on a limited basis anyone who is going to give factual information. If you're able to take a look at the documents that came up, if you wish to comment or examine on those, that's going to be afforded in the chair's discretion. I'm not, I'm not the arbiter of everything is fair. This gentleman is, he's the chairman of the town council, but it is a fairness procedure. So you have to understand, Mr. Dodd is going to have the opportunity to also present contrary evidence if he wishes to, but if you, if you put a witness up, we're going to ask that he be sworn.
Sure, absolutely. Without doubt.
And if there's something, Mr. Davio, that you wish to use as factual information, I'd suggest you be sworn as well. If you're just making argument, that's...
I'm just, I'm making argument, and the, and the materials that I, that were submitted, I want to be part of the record.
Fine, then what we'll do is we'll give Mr. Dodd an absolute right to, to, to comment on those and to see them in advance so that you have the opportunity to at least...
Before we spend what could be literally hours and hours and hours, the, the council should know, this matter is in, is in Washington County Superior Court. Mr. Davio's client, through different counsel, has already attempted to get a preliminary injunction as to the issue of alleged discharge from my client's property to his client's property. After a three-day hearing before Judge Taft Carter, the motion for preliminary injunction was denied in that there was insufficient evidence put forth. It seems to me they've chosen their forum, they're in, they're in Washington County Superior Court, we've had a hearing, Judge Taft Carter has jurisdiction, you're free to hear whatever you like to hear, obviously, but this is the wrong forum. They can't take two bites at the apple. What we lost in Superior Court, let's give it another whack here. The only other point, we can spend hours doing this. My client, at the time he applied for the license renewal for FNG, simply was requesting a license renewal. I think the, the council knows, or some of you may know, that my client now has a significant health issue. He has closed the, the gates on this facility as of today, the first of November, and he is simply going to crush out, take in no new material, crush out what's there, and the cars will be gone. That's not going to solve the issue of their allegations that we're discharging hazardous material onto their property. That will still remain, I should, think it should remain, in purview of the Superior Court. Once the cars are gone, maybe there'll be a negotiation as to how to remedy what may or may not be there, but we can go through a full hearing about all the science. I think it's somewhat pointless if we're now seeking to amend our application to a provisional license for crushing out only. It shouldn't take a year, I know these licenses for a year, and there'll be no new material taken in, no new cars, no new metals of any sort we're crushing out, period.
Tim, just, a good information for the council to, to consider, but the point is, I think that the way to do it is to allow the remonstrant to, to, to make his statement. If he wishes to put somebody up, fine. This town council has to make a decision on, on renewal of the license tonight. So understand the, the competing jurisdictions, but the council has a job to do too, and that is to either grant, renew, or otherwise.
Just for the record, where this...
So you're going to get an absolute opportunity to address the council with all the facts and argument that you wish, okay? So I think, I, I suggest that if we don't go all night, one thing we should do is get on with this and allow that to complete their...
Can I move up? Yeah. I'll be, I'll be very brief. I also wanted to note that if you look at the notice of intent initially offered, issued to him, they issued a violation against James Pond for having contamination on their property. They later rescinded that to say, you're not the responsible party for it, FNG was. So, and, and would we expect a bite of that apple? DVR issued them a license, we're taking a bite of that apple. DDM can shut it down, we're taking a bite of that apple. You have, again, the sacred responsibility to protect the public's health and safety and general welfare. So it ends the court. So there's...
David, not to stop you, but the town council understands that. You're here for, you're here for your, for your case.
Fine. Mr. Nicholson, can I have you come out and, and you sworn? So just briefly, Tom, could you just, just give a brief overview of your expertise, just so people understand kind of your professional background?
My name's Tom Nicholson, a president of CNE and the Land Council. We talk at Rhode Island. I have a bachelor's degree in civil environmental engineering from Northeast University, and a master's degree in civil environmental engineering from Woodstock Polytech. And I've been doing site evaluation and remediation for 30, 40 years.
And in the context of your experience, we've asked you to go out and analyze what's going on at the FNG facility as it relates to the James Pond Realty, is that right?
Yes.
And, and in fact, the court gave you permission to go on to FNG's facility to take samples, is that correct?
They did.
Okay. And so based on the sampling results on, well, in your opinion, is any contaminants from the FNG facility flowing onto the James Pond Realty property?
Yeah, objection.
Okay.
Excuse me, objection.
Okay. Is on the record?
Yeah, you're, you're going to whether or not it's admissible evidence, whether there's a proper foundation, like...
Foundation.
You're going to get to cross-examine the council. Basically, what they do with experts, at least since I've been here, in my view, is they hear it, they give whatever weight they think is appropriate to it from zero to 100%. So you can argue what the weight should be. If you think it should be zero, then make your argument better. Okay, but we usually don't stop people from at least putting on what they, what they wish, okay?
So, but, excuse me, just, I want to make a record here, because this may not...
That's who you're...
I don't know how the council can properly consider what the gentleman's going to say if they don't know the factual predicates for his opinion. So...
That would be your argument, that there would be zero weight?
All right, so Tom, before we get interrupted again, let me quickly cut through. So you, 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 you've been on James Pond property in the past, correct?
Yeah, I, I went on James Pond property initially in 2017. I was asked to take a look at it because there was some concern that there might be some contamination in the lot out there. When I walked the property, this was in October of 2017, I walked the property, there was an area up on the westernmost fringe of it that was covered with, with like an oily sludge. I, I couldn't really identify it, except that's what it felt like. So I put together the sampling plan, which was about a 200, 200, like 200 foot area, and I was impacted, and we took samples of soil every 20 feet over the area. I think you have a small copy of this, but I don't know.
Show us the document to go after this.
Hey, I need you to see that.
Yeah, this is what people do with evidence, right?
So this is... So, this is, uh, this is the, this is the town that you have. Now, the thing that, there's no topography on this mountain, but the land slopes this way. It slopes from west to east. So, any rain that falls here is going to end up there. Now, there's a stone wall that separates the, to the property. And what had been done when I was out there, there was little breaches in this stone wall, letting, letting stormwater through. And when I let, let it through, then the breach would be closed up, and another breach would be opened. There was another bit of stone falling out of there. Uh, that's what's signified by these shady areas, but.
These, are those, are those breaches become open actually?
No, I did something over, over the machine and made it open.
All right, you're, okay, I got it, thank you.
I mean, that, that's the only way you move a bone with the size of their roof. And the machine is elevated. So, you look at, all these samples were sent, were sent into the laboratory, and we got the results back, and it's very difficult to see the results. But if they're red, they're over the D E M levels. And if they're green, they're over the D E M levels, this is the sample, go here. Only the black ones are below the remediation levels. So, I'll use my glasses, though.
I understand, it was recorded, we've, I object because these conclusions are without foundation.
You could explain that later, Tim, yeah.
So, at outside analysts will have, take all these samples, and we're finding T P H, total hydrocarbons at levels of two thousand, three hundred and thirty, uh, three thousand, eight hundred and fifty, uh, eleven hundred, uh, five thousand, uh, sixty. I mean, those are the levels of, of total hydrocarbon. The D E M has a cleanup standard for, in residential areas, it's a hundred and fifty. And for industrial areas, it's five hundred. And we were looking at, at, um, levels in the thousands. So, um, the court allowed us to go on to the F and G property to sample only along this strip, to see if, in fact, uh, was a contribution back. So, you know, there's an area of photograph of the F and G property. Let's see, this is a, a long pond that runs along the path. So, right now, all stormwater flows this way into this trench, down through this trench, and then on to the F and G property. So, what we do is we sample soil and water, soil and water, soil and water. We also did the soil on the pond property and the soil on the pond property overhead, in the areas where the two breaches were. The other, the results, again, all done by outside, uh, certified in local laboratories. T P H along this, the highest we get is seventy-four thousand. So, to give you a, a frame of reference, ten thousand is one T P H, is one percent. So, the soil in this area here is seven percent oil, which is basically oil. Also lead, can drip, yeah, flow here, leads in the hundreds, all through here. Uh, and even the T P H is over on the property. Everything was consistent, with what we found, what we found on the F and G property was consistent with the contamination.
Tom, quick question, is there any reason why, is there any evidence that, that someone with, like, won't do property, was operating some sort of facility, some sort of machinery?
No, no, that, this is, this is, you can see, this is very untouched, untouched area. I mean, it's just like the back.
When, when this stuff laid on the ground, right, does it have the potential to move vertically through the soil profile?
It does in the worst spots. And when we were doing this sampling study, we did one sample, and we went down to two feet down. And, but, yeah, two feet down, we still had two thousand pots D P H.
And is the F and G facility over any drinking water supply?
This whole area is G A A, yeah, D E M, D E M's down city.
So, people around this area want to pump your well to drink, that's, that's what they're pumping into?
Or if you ever want to put a missile supply, that's the best kind of water you can get, G A A.
Oh, I see, pumping it for, for the water, where is this? All right, I think that's all that, uh, we want to, uh, he's going to, he's going to have a question. Do you want to eat off still?
Sure.
Thank you. Now, so, what's your last?
Tom Nicholson.
Mr. Nicholson, I should know that by now. Who drew the lines here?
I did.
So, this is not a class one survey, you didn't take any measurements. So, you don't really know where you were taking samples from, do you? Could have been the F and G property, it could have been the town's property.
No, no, we scaled them off, off the stakes, and we started another survey. And I had it picked up on the survey.
Who did the survey? Do you know?
It was done by an American engineer.
American, yeah, American engineer.
Well.
About a year old.
Do you know if they moved the stakes?
It didn't look like it moved.
Did you tell?
Yeah.
You were out there every day to see if they're in the same spot?
No.
So, you're going to know if they're removed.
I didn't know that, I know the stakes were.
Now, if there's anything coming from the F and G property, it's going on to the town's property, right?
Yeah, I don't.
What do you mean, you don't know?
I don't know.
You don't think it's going on to the town's property before it ever gets to the pond property?
I don't know, all I know is if that's the town's property, I'll come disguised, I'll pop in.
Yes, sir, the question is quite simple. If there's anything coming off of F and G, I'm not sure if there is, doesn't it go on to the town's property?
Wait, I just, I don't know if he knows it's the town property or not.
It goes this way.
It's a little over. You don't know who owns this piece?
Smart one.
You don't know that it's over the town? You don't recall that being discussed over and over in Superior Court? You sat there for the whole hearing.
I paid much attention on this, I'm testifying.
Did you ever inquire who owns this? Do you care who owns this?
No.
Would it have any effect on your conclusions as to where this might be going?
No.
Do you recall the judge asking the, the plaintiffs why they didn't include the town of Exeter? Because for any injunctive, excuse me, sir, let me finish the question. For any injunctive relief, they'd have to go past Exeter's property to get to the pond property, right?
Oh, my God.
You don't remember that, not even a little bit. Now, this thing here.
Can I ask a question? You guys both could ask a question?
Sure.
Timothy?
Yes.
What was your last name?
Dodd.
Dodd, okay. Um, where, where did it come from before it went to the pond, even if it is the town's property?
We don't agree that anything came from there. There's a difference between what they think and what they've proved.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the next little ad is important.
This is important.
But there's a difference between what they think is happening and what they've proved is happening. Now, you try to put this same doctrine in court, right?
I didn't put anything there.
You recall the judge not accepting it?
I'm not a lawyer.
You recall the judge not accepting this?
No, I mean, a lot of that stuff is getting to the judge, I don't know more than what was.
You really don't know?
No, I should ask the attorney.
Well, you were there, sir.
Yeah, but I don't pay attention to what the attorney's doing.
Well, you know, your, the plaintiff's motion for a court injunction was high, you do remember that, right?
No, I don't, because wasn't that done by mail?
No, you call me. Call me, what, what, what you should speculate and. Yeah, if I get a chance.
Well, whatever, what you should, let's speculate and.
Yeah, if I get a chance.
Tim, Tim, hang on, let me write. You want something to add? Why don't you just pass it down, we'll get, we'll get, it's only. Sure, there are three phases. When somebody's asking, uh, the court to stop someone from owning something, there's three phases. First is a temporary restraining order, which has the lowest level of proof that's needed. Court often will enter a temporary restraining order, but it's only for a limited period, usually seven days. The next stage is a preliminary injunction, which is a higher level of proofs. It's a bigger, uh, hearing, which more evidentiary, uh, usually cross-examination evidence put placed in. At the end of that, the judge can stop people and enter an injunction, which is preliminary in nature. Then you go to a trial on, on merit, for final injunction, a final injunction, a trial on merit. So, you actually have to go through three phases to get to a final judgment. And this would have been the second phase of it generally. Sometimes the D R O is, is, uh, put together sometimes, the, the, the parties agree to do it all in one's trial, in merit, sometimes a trial. I don't know what this is like, when he, when, when lawyers talk about preliminary injunction being granted, that's usually after a certain amount of evidence has been placed before a judge makes a preliminary decision. It's not, that's binding for the rest of the case until, until the trial on merits happens.
This, this has been denied, and now it's ready to be required.
Yes. And the relief that was being sought in part was, uh, enjoying F and G from letting contaminated water runoff allegedly onto the pond property. Now, sir, you've pointed out a couple of places where you think water was getting through onto the pond property, correct?
Yes, sir.
And those rocks that you're talking about, do you know whose real estate that is?
I don't know, it's cars right on the other side.
But you don't know who owns it?
It, it's immaterially, I'm looking for contamination.
But I'm asking you.
I do not know who owns.
Well, what kind of a difference is to know the runoff is coming from F and G or from the town of Exeter?
No.
You don't think so?
If, if this is the town of Exeter, right, the only contamination that can happen there is your client piling cars in.
You're speculating, aren't you?
I don't know, I really don't.
Give me the basis for your opinion.
My opinion is the contamination that we found is absolutely indicative. Right down to gasoline, you know, motor oil, gasoline, antifreeze. Now, what happens on Willow Lane except, what happens to that facility? I don't know.
You can, you'll be testing on Willow Lane?
I don't know who Willow Lane is. I tested where your cars stop, where your client's cars stop.
To the best of your knowledge, did you do any sampling on Willow Lane?
I don't know who Willow Lane is.
So, to the best of your knowledge, you didn't do any sampling on Willow Lane?
Yeah, well, if this is Willow Lane, it looks like I took two samples on it.
But do you know?
Those samples were shown as, I can say with absolute certainty that these samples are where they were shown on this sketch.
But you don't know if that's accurate, do you?
I absolutely know it's accurate. They measure our stakes in a field that was placed by our survey.
Don't you usually work off a class one survey?
No, we never work off a class one survey.
Oh, I won't be hiring you. Um, now, when you said you didn't give these results to the lab, who took the samples?
I did.
You did?
I did.
And where'd you send them?
These went to Premier Laboratory in Connecticut.
And where are the results from Premier Laboratory?
In my office.
Okay, so, what you're, in your office, is what you're asking this council to accept is true, that these results are in your office, and you put them on a graph, correct?
They were transcribed, and under that graph, as you said, the standard of the industry for site remediation is to transmit it. The analytical work associated with that is three inches thick.
Right.
So, what would you like me to do with that? If I wanted to show somebody where the contamination, hand them three inches of paper? Or I hand them a map like this and show them all the samples, the results, and where they're located?
Well, this is only as good as your results, and I would have liked the opportunity to take you through those three inches, just like.
You were given them, remember, in court.
So, you didn't bring the most pertinent document with you tonight? You just brought your conclusions without supporting.
No, that is the most pertinent document.
You didn't bring your results, sir.
That is the most pertinent document.
You didn't bring your results, sir.
I don't need my results.
Mr. Nicholson, I might cut this off.
Yeah, let's just keep moving on.
Yeah, okay, so.
Let's not get argumentative with witnesses. You made your point, I think, town council?
Yeah.
Satisfied with?
I, I, I think you get the gist of it, thank you both. I just want to conclude by saying, okay, Mr. Nicholson must be lying. D E M must be lying, but town council had concerns, they must have been lying. Everybody's lying, but Mr. Nick, uh, Mr. Dodd and his client. You can take the weight of the evidence that's presented tonight. D E M, your own body, and Mr. Nicholson, you can find out who's telling the truth, who's, who's fudging, why, I don't know why, he would, that's it.
And then you.
In, in any event, if you're, this gentleman is going to offer it as an expert. You've had experts before you in the past. An expert, if they're qualified and competent, would bring the data to support your results. This gentleman has brought no data, he's brought no map, whatever it means. It's only as good as the data that he relied on of producing it. It's only as good as the testing that he did.
Is there any other, are there any other businesses or operations in that needed area that have oil aside from F and G?
We don't know.
Do you guys know? Does anybody?
If there's a solar farm next door, I don't think that has.
Hang on, some, some order, just if we can. Tim, are you going to present any, any witnesses?
No.
So, uh, do you want to sum up? Do you want to sum up? How do you, do we want to, council, do you have any questions?
I thought, I've got some questions for Mr. Dodd. You stated that they're going to be, they are in the process of closing the facility.
At the time that Mr. Jarvis applied for his license renewal, he intended to continue his business. Again, the remediation is on a separate track. It could well be that in the future, depending on what a court finds on a full trial, things might change. But right at the time, he was expecting to continue in business. Some of his A N P has been diagnosed with a very serious, extremely serious health issue, for which he is going to be undergoing significant treatment for quite a while. He's never going to go back into the business. He has locked the front gates, he tells me, and he's not going to take in any new material, no new cars, no new wells, no, anything of the sort he's going to crush out. He can do about forty cars, forty cars a week.
Probably.
Forty cars a week, he's got about six hundred, seven hundred there. You can do the math, depending on whether we get a bad winter or not. He should be crushed out within a period of months. Now, as far as water runoff, contamination, alleged contamination, alleged water runoff, the Superior Court's going to figure that out. And even if the cars are gone, there's still going to be an issue to be decided in the Superior Court as to if there's contaminants, if they're of a significant concentration to require remediation. What would the remediation be? What would be the expense? Who would dare that expense? All of those, I think, are appropriate, uh, factual and legal materials for Superior Court. But for our purposes here, we're just looking to convert our request to a conditional license, provisional license, whatever you call it, to crush out. I guess if the license renewal is denied, the cars are going to sit there, and that can't be addressed by Mr. DeVideo. So, we would ask that the license, provisional license be granted. You can check and see if he's doing anything new out there, and then you can cite him appropriately. But I don't expect that, because he can't really be out there every day working.
Now, there's another business located out there, it's a tire shop, that's a separate entity.
Yes.
Yes, so that's not affected.
You're not taking in new tires either, right?
Oh, no, that's a tire company, I had that for years, damn, but I had sold it to a company.
You don't own that anymore?
No, I don't.
So, this doesn't involve that other company at all? I, that piece of property, I remember when I was a kid, it was an old, rundown restaurant at this piece of Americana from the thirties before ninety-five, and so. And that gas station, been there forever, there's another one farther down the road, so. How do you issue a provisional so they can clean up?
I'm not sure, I've heard exactly what it is that they think they're suggesting by.
Because we have to follow the ordinance, correct?
Always, I just staple one. Sorry? What are you asking for?
I'm not sure it's within your stat, ordinance authority to have a provisional license to crush out. I know D B R's done that with different junkyards in the past.
Because they're also licensed by the state, correct?
Right. I mean, if it's an all or nothing proposition, um, if you, if, we're not withdrawing the application, we'll take a full license, but we don't intend to.
Quick question, and he's licensed by D B R, one of their requirements is to have a license. One of their requirements is to have a license from the municipal valley?
Well, that's always been an ongoing dispute as between the jurisdiction of the town and the jurisdiction of the state. I don't want to bore you with that.
Oh, I own businesses, so I deal with dissolved materials.
You know.
No.
But we're not looking to get into that. We're just looking for provisional license. I don't know if you can give him a full license, but put a stipulation on it, no new material is brought in. I mean, I think that between...
Can you do that?
You probably could put conditions on a license as to what can and cannot be done. I have one question for you, Tim. The complaint in the Superior Court, is it alleging that there is damage being done to the adjacent properties?
Yes.
And so you've asked the court to consider that?
Well, the plaintiff claims that there's material running from Flagline's property onto their property. That's a proven allegation.
Just wanted to understand what the nature of the complaint is. But yes, going back to the question, Mr. Patterson, I believe it's within the jurisdiction of the town to issue a license, place conditions on that. I don't see why not, if they are in the... If the town believes it's within the best interest of the health, welfare, and safety of the public. So, you know, this goes for both sides. If they believe that it is or isn't, it should be one of the arguments I'm sure both parties are making. One is that this is necessary, and the public outside they will offer, and others that it isn't. And I think that's the issue before the council, but...
I may make a suggestion on behalf of... Because I know if we help, the practical solution goes to a legal solution. So the provisional license, trying to be flippant, like based on our view, you've got one more year to contend on property, right? And thereafter, you're done. Now, I would agree that if the applicant agrees to the conditions, I think that... I'm not trying to do your job, Mr. Maruzak, but I think that there are certain limitations based on the statute, five four twenty one, or five twenty one four, whatever it is that restricts you, how you... What conditions you can place them. I think the applicant can accept or agree to limitations to the conditions of the license, which is provisional, it ends in one year. I've got another concern, not in addition to what happens over the next year, but let's say he doesn't crush out. He can sell this facility to anyone else, and that new person, ABC Corporation, come back in here for another license. So I'm not sure if that cures, permanently cures our issue. I tell you what would cure our issue. Whether or not it's on town property, whose property, there's a big lagoon along that western, eastern border. If we could get that removed, and so that that stuff doesn't have the potential to spill over onto our property, I think we might be able to solve our concern. Well, at least not permanent damage, but at least ongoing damage. If we didn't have that lagoon, that would help stuff from migrating over to our side. So provisional, great. We'll deal with the next guy who wants to come in for a license. But if we can keep that lagoon from being filled up and spilling over, we're arresting the problem that we've identified.
So then I'd like you to do what the Superior Court said no to. We're just simply here for a license regula. We're explaining that the gentleman, my client, has a significant health issue. He's not taking anything new, he wants to crush out. As far as a lagoon, so-called, and whether or not material is hazardous or not, that's the purview of the Superior Court. We'll be more than ready to fight that fight when the case is reached for trial, but in the interim...
Why haven't you thought that with DEM? Now, why haven't you thought that with DEM? DEM is alleged just what we're alleging, and you've failed to respond to that. So I think it's just the Superior Court is the final arbiter of this.
I know you're trying to testify.
I'm trying to testify.
I know you're trying to testify, but when my client received the most recent letter from DEM, in my office, he asked for all the materials that they were relying on in support of their allegations. I had yet to receive that material. I'm sure Mr. DeVideo doesn't know that fact, but if he did, he either is misrepresenting himself to this body, or he's simply uninformed. That not being... That's besides the point. If DEM wants to do something, let him have at it, we'll go to war with him as well. They want to continue in Superior Court, no problem, but for this purpose, for tonight, what we're saying is, give us a license so we can crush out. Put the limitation on it. There's no harm, no foul. And if, in the unlikely event that the property is sold to somebody else who's so foolish as to want to take on a metals crush out operation, they'd be limited to the license that he's got to sell them. So there's no harm, no foul, and I don't think that's in the cards whatsoever, based upon my knowledge of what's going on with this gentleman and his health.
Yeah. Say they sold this piece of property, and someone wanted to operate a junkyard, and they come in, it's not a renewal, it's treated as a new application. They have to turn this in, then go to the hoop, so, okay.
Are we done? Both sides?
I just want to qualify that new license. So any facility that was in existence, when they apply for a license, gets significant grant granted rights. They don't have to worry about operating certain... They don't... There's significant... First of all, if you've been existed before, even though your ordinance says otherwise, right, that when a license comes up, it's supposed to go out for public notice or objection, you're right, you know about that, your ordinance says that, right?
I'm going to answer the question.
Okay. So the... So when that person comes in for a new license, James Pond can't object to it as if it was a brand new facility. There are a whole host of other exemptions that a pre-existing facility gets. By the way, you're right, it's not transferable, you can't sell a license. In two thousand, when the license was first issued to FNG here, they can receive a renewal license, not a new license.
Both sides done?
Yeah.
County Council, please.
Anybody have any questions?
Ian? So the licenses are December to December?
December one, right?
Yes. So if we're going to issue a provisional license, will the contingent are subject to inspection by the zoning inspector to find out exactly what's down there with regards to inventory?
You can make that a condition? Sure that that would be...
But the next council meeting isn't until the first Monday in December, isn't until the sixth, so it's not like we can table this. I was looking to see, you know, if we could table it till we can figure out, you know, exactly where we are and how you want to craft the provisional license for James' health. But we should have some type of input from House in regards to what's down there and so on and so forth, so if we have specific language that constitutes that nothing more comes in, that's exactly what happens, which I'm assuming that's the case, if, you know, we don't have any reason to believe that wouldn't be the case. You know, because obviously Mr. Jarvis is ill, so, and the place is blocked, but they probably have it in the provisional license anyway. I don't know that this is something that... Looking to get maybe an opinion from the solicitor or...
Well...
Whether... I mean, this isn't really... This isn't really turf we've tread on before, right? So...
No, no, we haven't had anything quite like this, but I do know what... I think the parameters of your authority are, as far as I'm concerned, you can deny the license, you can issue it on conditions. One condition, I think, could be that it would be subject to closure within X period of time, and that it would be only for closeout purposes. You could issue conditions that crushing take place in a certain area away from the ... Away from the boundaries, if you wish, there are all kinds... This is your authority to either issue or not issue, or issue with conditions. So I think you can do that, I think you can do it. Also, you might make it subject to further court orders. For instance, the court is considering these public health or private property right issues. You could make it conditional upon, obviously, any decision of the court on that. You could have them come back for a status, as Lynn points out. Any kind of reasonable condition you believe is necessary in the interests of the health safety of our people, given what you've heard here tonight, and whatever weight you wish to give to any of the testimony and argument, or something that's within your...
I believe Attorney Dodd said it was like four months, right? You were probably thinking that... Obviously, you're not going to hold you to a specific date, so...
Forty a week.
Right?
One sixty a month.
Right.
Six hundred vehicles. The winter's coming, I don't know that they'll be able to crush out consistently.
Right.
And to Mr. Maruzak's point, if it's a year provisional license, and you want to have it reviewed to make sure that there's no shenanigans in, let's say, six months, he'd be okay with that. And obviously, if something happens in court between now and the December of 2022, whatever the court does, I believe, with all due respect, would supersede...
It's no question that somebody would have to notify the town, given the fact that there was an issue.
No question. And we're not trying to do this to circumvent what's going on in court. I don't know if court would happen really till after the holidays, but that's a different story.
So, basically, it's open to the town council?
I have a procedural issue or question as well. Obviously, I've sat here for years, and I've heard these concerns that have surfaced year after year. I'm frankly very disappointed to hear a suggestion that something's coming from town property and potentially contaminating a neighbor. I know we talked about a right of way, or some old abandoned road of some kind. I do not believe there's been any activity along that town property, though I'd like to stand corrected. And just for my own information, I know we have our DPW director here. You know this piece of road, or right of way, or whatever we're speaking about, Steve?
I do.
You heard and referred it to Willow something? Is that Willow Lane? Is there... Steve, you know this, of what we speak?
Yes, to my knowledge, there's been no proof shown to the town that they own that property. It's not on our official roadmap. I have no record indicating that it belongs to the town of Exeter. It does not land right now as a public road.
They... Are you referring to the applicant when you say they?
Anybody, anybody. I have no proof that that's town property. I cannot say that that is town property. I have no proof.
Well, that was just one question. The other question I have is if we revisit this in six months, or whatever you might craft, is it not possible if a resident of town has filed suit against these people that we might join that suit? I have a concern for some of the issues. Is that a possibility? I'm not saying we would, but do we sometimes join a suit against an offender? Or is that...
Well, I mean, that's... I suppose it's always a possibility, depending upon what facts you might have, but I don't believe...
Probably not.
I've ever joined a suit between private parties without some impetus coming from the court to do that, but is it possible?
Sure it's possible.
I suppose that someone can move to intervene.
I'm not suggesting we do that. I just... I'm just concerned about...
I would take court approval before you could do something.
Well, I would certainly consider something with provisions, such as you've suggested, Jim.
You know, I didn't mean to suggest any particular provision.
No, but that there be some.
If we don't pass the license, if you deny the license, how will it get cleaned up? What happens? Do we get stuck holding the bag? What happens?
You're going to hope somebody's going to buy it and clean it up.
Okay. Let me throw this motion out there for discussion.
Kind of like similar to the issue for last month and the month before with regards to a body of water.
I want to throw a motion out there for discussion. I want to make a motion to renew FNG Sandwich Company's junkyard license, the sole purpose of cleaning up and closing... Cleaning up existing inventory and closing that facility. Zoning inspector report to the town council at the December meeting, and report to council every month until final cleanup.
I'll say again, I'm motion.
Any discussion?
Pass this one.
Go right ahead.
When you say cleanup, that might be interpreted by some...
Ah, all right, all right. Cleaning the scrap vehicles. Clean up, okay. Cleanup of scrap of exist... I like that, said existing inventory, so... Renew license for cleanup of existing inventory. Zoning inspector report to town at December meeting and report to council every month until the inventory is cleaned up, final cleanup.
You want to put a statute of limitations on that, on that motion, or you want to just meet both and it's going to be...
You have to renew the license for one year, right?
Right, yeah, I'm not sure I...
You can change that because it's in the order.
I think that if the zoning official found that there were violations of the provisional license, it'd be brought back in, and I show cause here.
Right, there would be show cause here in that event, if it would be told came back there were violations of your conditions.
I don't understand if the owner is very ill, and I'm sorry for that, how he's going to operate... How is he going to do this? I don't... Can you explain that, please?
Sure. He loves to get up on the tractors and on the crushing equipment and on the cutters, but he also has employees who do that under his supervision. He can stand there and say, do this, do that, but he has stamina issues, balance issues, which make it unwise for him to be operating the heavy equipment, but he has employees who will be operating the heavy equipment under his supervision.
How do we know? Because you like proof. I don't have any proof that he's going to actually do that.
Well, you're going to be sending out your zoning inspector. I'm sure the plaintiffs will be bird dogging this thing every day, and if there's a violation, I'm sure they'll bring it to your attention.
What's the difference between crushing out and doing normal operating daily business?
The difference is the gates are shut, and he doesn't accept any new material. I've represented junkyards in the past. The only way anything new would come in, sometimes people say, I've got this stuff on a lot, and they'll throw it over the fence to get it off their hands, but it would be things he was taking in, he wouldn't be paying for it. He's not going to take in any new material. If somebody trespasses, I can't have eyes out there 24 hours a day. There is no expectation and no intention that anything new comes in. Simply the material, the crushable material that's there is to be crushed out. He's got a crusher there, he's got guys who know how to do it, and he wouldn't be making these representations if he wasn't going to do it. There's nothing to be gained by him making representations that he can't fulfill.
And to your knowledge, are they being crushed on, like, the surface they're supposed to be crushed on, the area they're supposed to be crushed on?
They're being crushed on a concrete pad.
On a concrete pad. Everything down there is concrete.
Would have been crushed out for a long, long time. And if there's any allegation that can be proved that there's any hazardous material that's resulting from this, removing the cars does not remove whatever the exposure or the liability might be for whatever damages that can be proved that my client caused any adjacent properties. That doesn't go away, and that's to be determined in court if they can prove that. To date, they haven't.
Any other discussion? Yeah. So I guess we'll take a vote on the motion. All favor?
Aye.
Proposed?
Do we have to come back every month for the status report?
Well, I haven't told the zoning inspector he's going to go out there every month, so someone will have to tell how that...
Maybe you could send that as a status report.
You know, I would advise if you could take some photos tomorrow, see how many cars were crushed. Keep a log, you know. I think there's something every two weeks. Like I said, How's going to find out tomorrow.
Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you again, Chris. Long time no...
Maybe next time we'll have beer, eh?
They're hiring, they need another inspector, they're down to three.
Statue of Liberty?
Statue of Liberty. Good old way to...
I'm going to talk to the doc later in the evening.
Firearm's view is nice when they do one. I have my cue myself on that one. You're up, Mike. You're up, Mike.
I'm going to make a motion to approve. To approve the renewal of firearms dealers license renewals for Shandry Farms and firearms Unlimited. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, that's it? The vacant seats appointments, everybody else is good? Okay, number seven, vacancies and appointments. Ah, number one, personnel board members, five members needed. Conservation commission, seven members needed. Okay, we can vote. Item B, Brian Sykes resignation, all voted. Worked, worked. Brian has quit, so. Need a motion to.
I, I, I would move that the records tonight's meeting indicate that this is like elected coin that has no letter of resignation.
After they use all the sick time and vacation time.
Correct.
I'll second.
With the motion?
Yeah.
If we don't vote, does he have to come back?
We usually accept every name and surname.
Okay.
Well, he just walked while he didn't.
Okay.
Other words.
Yep, all favor, aye.
Aye. Indicating.
So, now we need a motion to post for a new position at the Public Works Department.
Some move.
Second, all favor?
Second, aye.
Aye. Okay, juvenile hearing board members, two needed for three-year term, beginning date of appointment, and one needed for an expired term ending March 4, 2022. Continue to oppose. Dowman, you're up. Board of Campus's alternate members, six-year term, beginning date of appointment.
This has to be made because it has to be a Democrat alternate, I suppose, according to what I mean. This is a letter that was received, that was written, received, written September 30th. Dear council members, I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Mary Zink for the position of Board of Campus's alternate, and thank you for your attention, consideration of this matter, and it's signed, Harry Harmon, Vice Chair, Exeter Democrat, County Committee, Evermwood, that she be appointed to that position.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, I already did motion on that one, I did it. That's right, okay. That's what I, we have. Go ahead, Steve.
I sent in a letter of recommendation for Scott Small. It's a very good application. I believe I've forwarded his resume, too.
You did, you did. I'm going to, I'll move that we appoint or hire Scott B. Small for the making position of Public Works employee. I'd just like to mention here what the message we, or communication we received from Steve says applicant was a public employee from the City of Howard. Applicant has experience in snow plowing, landscaping, excellent botanical experience, forklift, loader and grader, would make immense improvement for the Exeter Public Works Department. And I would say with that kind of experience, you want, I see fire for me.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearings, I guess I need a motion to open a public hearing at the Exeter liquor license board?
So moved.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, Lynn.
So, um, all our licenses are good, except for Sophie's Brew House, whom we have not permitted through the Department of Health food license, but they all need to be approved subject to the certificates of good standing being received from the state. All of them, because the state hasn't.
Yeah.
It's the state, it's not the applicants, it's the state. They've all applied, we're just waiting, will they be okay? And that usually comes direct to us. I don't know.
And, and we're approving these a little ahead, too, right? Because they, they've gone through the end of this, so.
Yeah, that's why they, they don't get around to it.
Right, because, right, we used to, we used to approve these years ago after they'd already expired, so in recent years, this, this whole process has been altered, and so we do it in a more timely fashion, which is a good thing.
Okay, now, we have to close the public hearing, we do a vote? Yeah. Motion to close the public hearing of the Exeter liquor license board?
That's a motion, I'll second that.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, you want to do a motion, Cal, you're good.
Oh, me? No. Well, I just move, well, I would move that the Class A licenses be renewed for Wolf Rock Wine and Spirit, A and J doing business as Exeter Wine and Spirit, and then we can take those classes separately. So, I move that they be approved.
I'll second.
Subject to, to appropriate fees and.
Certificate of.
Certificate of good standing and being received by the clerk before they were issued.
Second, so, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see, last BB circles, I'll make a motion to approve, is that you make all of them in, or just don't, A for K?
Subject to.
Except for J? Both would have been added except for one of these papers.
Subject to received.
Okay, subject to receiving, table of, from the state, all favor?
Aye.
Second. Okay, now Sophie's is missing what?
So, she's missing her, um, Department of Health food license, so you can just grant hers subject to certificate of good standing and Department of.
Okay. Make a motion to issue Sophie's brew house license. Condition two.
Certificate of good standing and.
Certificate of good standing and Department of Health food license.
Being received.
Second.
Discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business. No, we're in a license cap, we have to do a vote on that, right, Cal?
Yes. Well, yes, but that's not.
We only do this once a year.
I know, I know.
Want to do a motion?
Oh, no, I, I, I would move that the liquor license cap be renamed at thirteen.
I'll second. All favor?
Aye.
Number nine, new business.
Should we move that we adjourn as they would with the licenses?
You can do that.
Licenses, did we already adjourn?
Yeah. Now, we're closing the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Close the public hearing, you want. So.
You adjust accordingly, Madam Clerk, please.
And I'll fix the, yeah. So, um, yes, adjourn on the Exeter license.
I'll second your motion, Cal.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. New business, uh, number nine, a extension and renewal of declaration of municipal state of emergency. Maria, I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, I was talking just to fine yesterday about continuing this, and he's looked into it, that half the cities and towns are no longer doing this. He does not see any grant money coming down, great opportunities coming up. He said, don't do away with it if it's going to affect anything you're doing right now.
So, I, the only thing I was thinking about is the broadband grants that are supposed to be coming down.
So, probably extend it for one more month?
Extend it for one more month, and then we'll look into it. I'll talk to the league of cities and towns and see what their justification is for not doing it.
Okay. He said it was all the smaller cities and towns, he said all the municipalities, cities were just keeping it out there, so. Okay, so we're in motion. One more time.
So, move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up, new business, item B, presentation and acceptance of audit report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019.
2019.
Somewhere.
Right on target, 2019.
But it was supposed to be 2021.
Isn't it supposed to be another year?
That's it.
That's why I have an account, do all myself. See, I'll say.
Yeah.
So, good evening, members of the town council. My name is Jeff Wadavick, I'm here with Mike Olson and Frank Napoli. We're with Wadavick and Company. We performed your audit this year, which is the June 30, 2021 audit. So, we have been the auditing firm for six or seven years, yes, and so we have a very short packet. Your audit report, for the guys, mentioning a couple of things, is due to the state of our Adam by December 31st, so we're way ahead of the game on submitting the audit report. You guys will probably be one of the first ones into the audit generals and the municipal players. And everything's in pretty good shape, so we'll go through it. What we, what we did is what Mike and Frank did is they put together a predated package so we don't have to go through the entire full audit report, so it's a recap of what's in your documents there, that was issued by us.
All right, so, we're going to start with page one of the packet, and what this is, is this is our independent auditors report. It's our standard report that says that we audited the town's financials, what management did, what we did, and the most important paragraph is on the second page, which is at the top, the opinion, which says that the town received a clean or unmodified opinion, meaning that during our field work in performing the, putting together the financials, we didn't notice any type of issues going on with the town. As we turn the page, on the next page at the top, this is just another paragraph that says we also did our audit in accordance with government auditing standards, which in the back of the full financials, there's a two-page letter from ours, our firm, that says we looked at your internal controls, and there was no issues in the internal controls, that's booked during the audit. So, if we turn the page, we'll go to the town's balance sheets. You're going to see there's three columns here, we're going to focus primarily on the general fund. The landfill closure is just considered a major fund, and your non-major other governmental funds are all your capital projects, and special revenues, which is a full document, is further detailed on page 46 through 53. So, for the general fund, to end the year as of June 30, you guys have about $4.2 million in cash at money markets, you have about $281,000 of property tax receivables outstanding. There was a little bit of an intercompany between the capital project funds of about $17,000. There's another taxable property receivable of about $15,000, giving you total assets of $4.5 million. As we come into the liabilities, the town had some accrued payables, town's payable and accrued expenses of about $227,000, again, some intercompany fund rece, uh, payables of about $1.5 million, and some other liabilities that mirrored the taxable property. We turn the page, going further down, balance sheet, there was some unavailable or uncollected property taxes at the end of the year of about $188,000, and this brings us into your fund balance. We have the town has, that 187 represents tax revenues that we, we not received within the first 60 days of the new fiscal year, so they're unavailable for current expenditures, meaning that had been collected within 60 days after June 30. Okay, so coming into the fund balances here, the town has committed about $500,000, it's assigned $575,000, and it's unassigned or a few of the available fund balance, or restricted fund balance is about 1.3. So, what we tend to look at when we look at the municipalities is the unassigned fund balance, which we like to see between 10 and 15% of your current year collections. The Town of Exeter is always coming in between about 9 and 10, this year it was about 9%. And on the committed side, because this is kind of a new line item, the town has committed through some of its resolutions to fund some of the Rhode Island State Troopers over a three-year term, contract term, so that those funds have been committed by the town, as well as set aside $70,000 for a comprehensive plan. So, that's what makes up the committed. The unassigned has always been what the town has kind of set aside for any potential overages from the school department, and that number hasn't changed in recent years. So, if we turn the page here, we're going to come into your statements of revenues and expenditures. The town's total revenues were about $16.3 million, of which property taxes makes up the most at $14.4, that's about 90% of the town's total revenues. Some of your state funding is, again, your second biggest source at about $1.1 million. And if we turn to the next page, we'll see the town's expenditures. The total expenditures for the town were about $15.6 million. Again, education is your largest expense at about $12 million, uh, $12.3 million, and that represents about 85% of the town's total expenses. So, overall, you guys are collecting about 90% from your property taxes and then shipping off about 85% of that, a little less than what you collect to the school department. The rest of your operations is funded through operations of the town departmentals and state aid. So, if we turn to the next page, the town did transfer some money to some of the other funds, and overall had a profit of $147,000 at the end of the year. So, your, your fund balance was increased by having $147,000 of all profit.
Had a surplus.
Surplus. As we turn the page here, this is just a summary sheet of your budget to actuals for your revenues. Ultimately, if you go on the full financials, page 41 breaks this down in terms of the line items the town looks at, but for the year, the town actually had favorable revenues of about $487,000. A lot of that was due to property tax collections and interest on that, because a lot of past collections were taken in during the year. And if we turn the page to the next section, we'll look at the budget to actual for the expenditures. Overall, again, there was positive variance in terms of you spent less than you budgeted, about $60,000. A good chunk of that came from your, from governmental or departmental areas having favorable balances. Overall, that comes down, the town did reappropriate some fund balance when it budgeted of $200,000, because it had a surplus, it didn't have to use any of that $200,000, so again, you get to your bottom line, or your surplus of $147,000.
That was what you, you anticipated is that's the expenditure, I explained, didn't need it.
On the next page, we have the schedule of property tax receivables, it's just a good schedule to show from the different years what the town collected in terms of its property taxes and what was outstanding. For the current year, for the total assessment, was $14.4 million. The town collected of that roughly $14.2, which I believe is 98%, and so it's a good collection rate in terms of the taxes. And on the last page, here we have the schedule of long-term debt. You can see, as we've had past discussions, Town of Exeter actually has a very good debt module, where it's not taking on a lot of new debt, it's paying for a lot of its larger capital additions with free cash. So, ultimately, at the end of the year, with its two bonds, a library bond and its developmental rights bond, the outstanding balance was $110,000, of which within the last six months you guys paid off a library bond. So, it really is down to the development of the bonds, which I think is 2023 will have that paid off. That is pretty much our presentation.
I'm just smiling because I've sat here a long time, I just didn't used to be like this. So, thank you, Maria, and everybody else that works here, I don't know what they're doing.
Collaborative effort.
I know.
Yes, your group has come a long ways. Maria does a very good job. And that's why we're here as quickly as we can be here. We do a lot. We have a couple of other municipalities, but we do a lot of fire districts and other governmental facilities. And you guys are definitely in the very top of efficiency and getting stuff done. We literally were here within four months of the end of the year, and most places are not that way.
You only have used, you know, we only used to run every year.
Yes.
But lots has changed, including staff. So thanks Maria. Thanks.
Thank you. These guys are so good with responding and, you know, getting everything done in a timely fashion. They came in with what they had to do. These couple of years have been tough, you know, with COVID and all the restrictions. And everybody's been, they've been overworked. We've been overworked, but we've got it done and no surprises. Anything that was over was expected. Anything that was under was also expected. Really no surprise in the audit at all. Is it pretty straightforward?
Sounds like you found everything in very good order.
Yes.
Can I make mention of something? I just, as the chair of the library board, I think she actually asked me to engage this group to go and do a process for the library instead of procedures.
Oh, good part of the library board, good, good. Something hasn't been done before.
It had been discussed in our office and it's been going back and forth. I think we're a little behind, but we're working towards that process.
Brand new field.
No, it's more on our side of the office that's behind, not your side.
No, I'd just like to say 98% correction rate as I think was significant for what I was elected in 19, in 1990. Things about 82%. I'm making a point here, we've come a long way.
My only comment on that would be a follow-up on the, on some of the older items. I can't speak specifically to the older items that are, you know, five or $10,000 that are back 15 years or so. But I mean, you guys may want to work, Maria may want to work with trying to, you know, update those items.
I think we have.
10 years, we do 10 here.
Yeah, we do 10. It's been, they've been working.
And believe it or not, some, they do come in, so, you know, especially, the only thing really is motor vehicles.
Right, the motor vehicles that are hard. Property ones are easy to attach, but the motor vehicle works a little time.
And I think as if the state continues with the motor vehicle phase out, those will go away. And the state is really cracking down on unpaid motor vehicle taxes. And they've been sending a lot of people to us saying you can't renew your license or your registration because you have outstanding taxes. And then just one more thing, this isn't going to go until December to be auditor general. So you have a lot of time to approve if you have any questions, you know, let us know, let me know as far as like the numbers go. It's not like a done deal if you'll see it tonight. It's.
Yeah, so what Maria is referencing is the state's now required all municipalities put an MTP report in here. So it's.
What's that?
It's the municipal transit transparency portal. So what they want us to do is they have a template that takes the financial information here, just your revenues and expense. And we have to send it to them. They have to verify that it's been matching reporting that Maria's been doing every quarter. And then ultimately they'll approve it and they send us the three pages to add to your report. They're in here now. I've kind of put the numbers where I know they're gonna fall, but they may have some modifications. So until that is approved, which doesn't get sent to them until the end of this month, then we won't be able to physically submit everything. So it'll probably be about the first or second weekend this summer.
So it's basically the same numbers, but the state wants it categorized in a certain fashion. And it's just kind of getting them in the right categories that they like to see, but the numbers don't change.
The state's trying to do a comparison between communities and see how things are spent. So they try to match you guys up with profits. Obviously that doesn't matter.
No, I'd just like to make one other comment too. I think it's to the credit of our collector, who, who. These two make a great pair over here. So anyway, to her, to her credit for being thorough and still. We've seen it.
Do we have a motion to the sessions?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the annual audit report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021.
Yeah, I'll probably gladly second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The worst part is if Link gives this to me, I miss it. She missed it. All right. Okay, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, item C, review with possible action. How will we display 10610 Rod Road at the Gemma House? Is this patient of Christmas display?
Wow, I think eleven you did that. So we, actually, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I really don't think we had any issues, you know, I feel unless you know of some, I don't believe.
Maybe as much traffic.
Like I said at the beginning, I didn't know Halloween was gonna be like it was last year. So it is less traffic. But it was, for Halloween it was not less. I mean, it was, it was a little bit less. We gave out 1,200 candies.
Oh, I mean Halloween night, I mean the Halloween season.
I think it was.
Less than a year ago?
No, no, I wouldn't say it's less than a year ago, but it was, it's less than Christmas in comparison.
Oh, 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 sure.
I mean, last Halloween was our first time did something for COVID. That was the original inception of everything, so it was very new. You know, now it's probably a little more known.
Also expanded? Would you say Halloween 3 and 14? No, I don't know.
They're equal to Christmas. Halloween and Christmas are equal. So we're respectfully requesting that you guys approve Christmas display. It would run from November 20th, Thanksgiving, January 25th to January 2nd, 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. So we request. So Halloween was, was 9 a.m., I'm sorry, it was 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. I think Christmas is just a little more.
Do you get a lot of people there after 9 o'clock at night?
Oh, yeah, a handful, I get a handful of people. More than a handful, I'd say. I'm trying to space it out so you're not getting that crowd. Normally you can dance it, you know, if you get a lot more people.
I noticed this year on social media, there's a lot more of these Halloween things all over the state, so. So are there any issues or problems or?
I was in constant contact with Mr. Gemma and I kept checking on his property. There were no issues and we just hired two constables on Halloween night. And it did pick up. They did have it where they had to have the cones out and had an actual third area for the traffic to be because they were actually on the road coming in. He had a significant amount, but I mean, it was constant. He did a good job. Everybody was really enjoying it. There were no problems. I mean, the guys handled it. And I talked to Jimmy Andrews, I told him if you had any problems, they give me a call. And he never called me, so.
I noticed the headlights were off coming out. Must have told him to.
We didn't, we didn't tell him to put the headlights off. Some people did. I think that was the kind of consensus. I was concerned that they would forget to turn the headlights on. But we definitely were monitoring how it was affecting Mr. Andrews and I don't believe it affected him.
I think people do that so they blind each other.
Yeah.
And you can see better when you.
In the original application, you said 10 a.m. to 9 p.m., but I thought I just heard you say 10 a.m. to 10 p.m.
Yes, I did request the extra hour because I do believe that I'm trying to space out Christmas so I don't run into any issues. Because based on Halloween, I think that we proved that we were successful and, you know, we can maintain it and we'll make adjustments based on, you know, hiring needed. So that's why I'm requesting the extra time. Last year was the 11.
Last year you were followed because everybody was cooped up.
Yes, everybody was cooped up. So I don't, again, I don't know this year. We would adapt and change based on, you know, any, any issues that we had. Well, we constantly monitored. There was no real overflow into the street. We did, you know, Mr. Miller and I talked and we decided that Halloween night was the one to do, and thank God we did it.
Correct. And we were able to have some donations of significant.
Yes, I, we have accounted all up. I believe it's gonna be, it won't be a significant, because Christmas was pretty good.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Certainly a worthy cause.
Yes, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
The town can do a 102 at some point if you want to. Candy cane lane, that's the dream. I'm not kidding.
Year of our Christmas tree.
Different people, different people can decorate.
Well, isn't it really the, the town is 10 Rod Road. You can go 10 rods wide.
Yes.
Yeah.
You can do something.
I mean, seeing my ways, one thing's, yeah, it's okay. Sounds good.
Break it down.
See more lights.
No, I didn't know that.
Okay, so somebody want to take a motion for this? I want to be frank and quiet a little bit, mate.
You have?
Yes.
We need the language here.
From November 25th to January 2nd, 10 to 10.
We will have detail on Friday and Saturday night.
Or as needed.
How quickly, like if you're seeing a traffic issue, how quickly can you call or pivot or?
I don't believe that we can pivot that evening unless, you know, I think it would.
That would be kind of difficult to do. I'd have to have it scheduled, so I have guys ready to go. Because just, you know, if they're not on a detail and they're going off doing something with their own families, it's tough to get somebody unless they're scheduled to work that night.
But you generally know it's a Friday and a Saturday that.
At this point, we know historically that's what happens, so we're gonna do that.
Well, obviously, the closer we get to Christmas, like we did with Halloween, more and more people are getting out and hitting the area. I noticed all over, even in town, there were more people out this year, Halloween in some of the neighborhoods, Cedar Grove, Hockingburg, Boom Lake. A lot more people were out this year.
Just want to confirm those dates, Mr. General.
Yes.
The 25th of November to the 2nd of January. Yes. 10 a.m. to 10 p.m.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that the council approve the Christmas display at the Gemma House, 10610 Rod Road from November 25th to January 2nd, at the time of 10 a.m. to 10 p.m.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who make you proud?
Thanks for the spirit. Thanks for the spirit.
Okay, next up, new business, item D, departmental.
All right, we received four bids ranging in price from $111,000 to $127,000. I do have issues with one of the bids. I know Dan and I've already discussed this a little bit. The highest bidder was for the John Deere machine. And it was at $127,000. Their six-month delivery is one of my biggest problems. And the reason I want you to understand that is they're not guaranteeing six months. Also, we have our existing machine, which needs some type of information, letter, legal, probably, with the company if that machine is approved. Because our machine may not be in the same condition in six months due to unforeseen events of course. That's one of my problems I have with waiting six months to trade a piece of equipment in that they're guaranteeing us $22,500 for. In six months, if something catastrophic happens to that machine, the taxpayers would be on the hook for that $22,500. That's my biggest concern with that machine. There's a few other small things with the machine. It doesn't quite lift as much as the one we currently have, but that's my big thing is the legality of the six months and the condition our machine could or could not be in in six months and what that company could come back at the town with. My previous recommendation was for the Caterpillar machine, which is readily available, three weeks approximately. And I stand with that recommendation only because it's available and we don't have to worry about our machine in six months.
Okay, question Steve. Does the Caterpillar guy, does it put a delivery date in here?
I, we talked to everybody.
It says 90 days.
That was what I put in the spec as the limit.
That's your spec.
Right, and then John Deere went 100% over that. Their three weeks, case is three weeks and as well JCV. And basically, they have to attach the thumb and receive the front bucket. But that's, that was, their delivery was three weeks. And like I said, again, the case and the JCV would be the same on delivery dates.
How many hours is that all though?
I want to say 4,700, maybe a little more.
You don't buy a.
I do. And again, we discussed it and I.
I wouldn't recommend buying, my personal opinion, I wouldn't recommend buying one.
I can only go by what paperwork I have and my concern is huge with the six months. And the condition my machine could be in, given a catastrophic failure. That's my big problem. If there was some kind of guarantee that they could give us, and I don't believe they can, that they will stand up to that number regardless. And as a business person, I can't see how they could do that. Because you never know what could happen. You know that in this business. I mean, something happens, the machine catches fire. I mean, anything could happen. Then we're on the hook for that money that we don't have in the budget. So that's my biggest concern with going with the John Deere. That's why I recommended the CAT, based on money originally, but now based on delivery, I have to still stay with the CAT versus the other two machines. For quality purposes and pot's delivery, things like that.
Steve, the CAT was not the low bid.
No, they're not. They are second, they are the third. They're the number three.
The two lower bidders count?
JCV at 111.
We gotta be careful how we say it, so.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking Steve to which one this was.
Right. They were, they weren't, they were not the highest, but they were not the lowest. But they are the quality machine. That's my recommendation. And I have to because of, I mean, if they were delivered tomorrow, I'd stand there and probably fight for the John Deere. Or in a reasonable time where they can guarantee us the trade-in value is not going to change and be on the hook for more money that we don't have. So that's what I have to stand right now.
Steve, in your experience as the Public Works, what is it, Chair, Supervisor, President of the Port Allen, what's your title?
I'm President of Around Public Works Social.
And others use this equipment that you're speaking?
All, all of them.
All right, so they all, they all give you.
This is the problem nowadays, and it's not just machines, it's pickup trucks.
Yeah. Right now with pot's delivery is huge.
They're waiting two years.
Yeah, pot's delivery is probably one of the biggest things I have to look at right now. Because, and availability, because if they tell me two years on a truck and they can deliver, they say six months in a backhoe, I don't know if I can trust the six months. That's my biggest problem.
We don't know what's gonna happen in the next three weeks.
Right, so that's why, if they have a machine available.
Well, last week, maybe we're talking Friday, I go to get working for a machine because a lot of these new machines now is synthetic, they all use synthetic. Well, I've still got some that still use the Rochelle roteller. And the supplier looks, okay, you know, you should better buy extra. And I'm like, what? Hey man, this is bad. And they allocate him 15 cases for the entire month of November. He usually sells that for two or three days. And then there's an oil filter shortage now. You did, no. And with machinery.
Well, I move for discussion at least that we purchased the Milton Cat based on the recommendation from Milton Cat, the backhoe, based on your recommendations, Steve.
No.
Provided, amended, provided they give it away in 45 days, Steve?
They, they told us.
You know what, no, you might follow up and...
They have one reserved for us. They, they tend to hold it, so, until, but that's what I was told, like, I'm just giving you the information we have.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Thanks for your hard work, Steve. Good luck with it. Do the stuff you do, if you do.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
I don't know.
I want you to know right now, Frank, I'm gonna, I'm gonna attack you.
Evening.
How you doing?
Sergeant Miller?
Yes.
Andrew, I live on Plantation Drive.
Okay.
On Colorado, Exeter, Lower East Side. To make it sound fancy. So, I'm a neighbor of Marcia's. And, uh, she, she couldn't make it.
Yeah, she told me she had, um, another, maybe that she couldn't make it, so. Yeah, I did tell, oops, I did tell her to write a letter, and I think she did.
Yeah, and she's actually, I don't know if I have a chance to speak, or if I was supposed to sign up earlier.
If, when they bring it up.
I think it's her. It's way down the list.
Oh, right here, right here. Yeah, so, um, we're right, we just got done with the awarding of the backhoe, so we got all this. And usually unfinished business, they go through pretty quick.
She, all she wanted me to do, just to care, is to remind her that people hear about the, the town council about the... Of course she does, that our, our council talked with South Kingston and make sure they're aware of... She wrote a letter to the head of the town council, North Kingston.
Oh, she did too?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, she wrote, wrote a letter to the, uh, Kingston Hill.
Because I know, I know the, um, the council did, they forwarded a letter to the academy, and she wanted to have, when I was speaking with her, the council to forward one to the South Kingston.
Yes. Yes, that's what she's hoping to follow. But she did send a letter to Kingston and the academy.
But every time, I, I was there six times.
Yes.
And every time I've been there, the first day, nobody was there. The second day, I think there were two cars, then one, one day, and then the rest of the time, they would come in, turn around, they'd go right out, they wouldn't even stop. I don't know if it's because I was there.
That's the reason that Danny and I, and I always felt, I'm under the original order, nineteen eighty-one, and that never happened, right? Second home, I think. So, that's like forty, forty years, right? It goes by fast. In any case, um, at one point, they did something and, uh, maybe, we put up a dead end sign. She and I prefer some other wording. Uh, she was trying to think of the right wording, and she and I talked remotely this evening, or, sorry, this afternoon. And I would suggest this, said, instead of out on the free street, what I see in everybody's neighborhood must, to reduce the, the traffic coming into it, it's called no outlet. So, there's a sign that's no outlet. That's a scary thing, that's like a Twilight Zone episode, that medieval day TV show. Meaning that, it's like, ooh, better not go in there. So, we've had a lot of traffic even from day one, nineteen eighty-one. You know, fraternity is coming in.
Well, I know, there's, there's a lot of things happening over there, where you, you've got the, uh, the college, the other school down the road, and then the academy right there. So, you got all that within a residential area, too. A lot of traffic. And I noticed South Kingston now has a police officer emptying out the, uh, the academy.
Why? Good, so they're doing a...
I don't know if it's gonna be going on continuously.
What they need is to reverse it, they, uh, they have, the, uh, the, uh, they have, now is the buses leaving ahead of the people. So, it's better to have the people clearing out and having a flow. They have to go in and around and come back, which is helping to...
Right, but I think what's happening is, and it's something that happens up here at E W G, where students, parents, if, if they can get out before the buses start rolling, that's fine, but the parents will come in and they, they have them lined up, and I guess they can't there because if they start lining them up, they don't have room for the buses.
That's right.
So, the buses need to get in, they empty the school, the kids, the students get on the buses, or the...
Oh, it's the other way around, yeah.
And then the buses leave, and then they're allowing the parents to come in to pick up the children that didn't get on the buses. So, what, so what's happening is, they're anticipating it. So, they're, if they're a little early, they know they can't get into the school grounds, so they're parking wherever they can park, and obviously, you can't park on, on Stony Fort because there's no shoulder.
Especially Old North.
Right, so, where, where are they going? They're finding the closest, the closest area that they can just, that they were in wait.
That's, that's correct. So, I think that's being understood by the Kingston Hill. And then if our town council suddenly has the same concept to, uh, South Kingston, that'd be great. And I think it'll be clear. The reason who got, kinda got involved is because even I saw it. They said, what do these, so not, I saw one or two or this and that, but she had, um, sometimes fired the tank car. And I've seen a few, and wondering what to do. Said, are these, looked our neighbor, like our neighbor's car running for the highest difference. So, I saw, and look into it, she was very cognizant of the fact these were not, you know, our neighbors. It was Kingston Hill parents. But, meaning before you sort of pick them up. But with, with your car there, which I, which I saw when I pulled in, um, then I saw things clear.
Well, I think that's what happened either, because I know she was out handing out flyers. There's some accepted, some just ignored her. Um, and I, and maybe they were getting the hint, because here I am, sitting there, watching the incident. So...
But the other thing we're tying into is this right here. Now, I, I went to the first town council meeting, uh, in South Kingston, which is their town halls on, uh, High Street. So, we saw this, um, organized, uh, huge law firm getting ready to get approved of this. When you have wetlands right here, valuable wetlands, I think it's Springfield. And, um, and look at the, the traffic they're proposing. These same developers did this little, um, I hate to say townhouse, but single-family, uh, turnoff right, right in here. Right when you see the two entrances and...
Right.
The homes are all the same, and they're called like, uh, separate condos or something, because they're all the identi... They were, very well made, it's a nice neighborhood with a private drop, right? So, when they put up this private, because they were anticipating already people coming into their neighborhood to park and wait.
When you leave the private drive, that means that the town doesn't, or maintains.
Yeah, but that's fine.
Where I was telling...
They have really good service for, because obviously, it's not the whole huge town of Exeter. It's like their private, a contract. So, what I mean is that, when you see a sign that says private road, then the parents would be sure. But bigger than that, so it's trying to, our, our main issue is what's going on here. Uh, between nine and thirteen, private solo homes, these are all duplex units here. This is like, in Exeter terms, this is like an urban neighborhood, right? And, and then there's issues about septic and all that. Plus, it's the traffic.
Yes.
With the traffic already, every student owns a car, they own carpool, I know that for sure. I used, I went there a long time ago. Back then, you had to be on the diesel, that's where you'd see your, as long as you weren't commuting to the world, of course you need a car. But now, nobody's, nobody's...
Seniors, you don't want to go to the school, now, anybody gets their driver's license, because they don't wanna discriminate.
So, but they're all one person per car, so it's thousands of cars.
Oh, I know, because it, we get the cut, you get Exeter Road, there's a cut through, tiny ponds, going over the smoke, and they're saving some. The traffic's a pretty, and, and they're flying too.
So, I was gonna bring up also to, to get feedback, the two, our town's council has contacted South Kingston about a simple parking issue and the logistics of the Kingston Hill, uh, students being released. And more importantly is this, a huge mess.
What's happening with the other schools? You got Kingston, uh...
Oh, that's called Compass.
Compass, that's right. So, you got them releasing people at the same time?
Yes.
You got Compass, you got the U R I, and then you got the academy.
Exactly.
And then you're talking about all those homes that are, that are eventually gonna be coming in.
These are duplexes, so there are roughly gonna be sixty, fifty-six families, fifty-six families in this small area. And this is, uh, getting into wetlands very, that's why there have been other developers who have brought this property. They've never been allowed because of the perks. Somehow, somehow, they didn't have a big law firm behind them. They represent the contractors, the contractors do that, little, um, slab, or condo, if you wanna call it.
Well, now it's septic system, right? Now it's septic systems where they don't have to be in the ground so much anymore. Everything's just above ground, that's what they do around the lake. Anything that would let the lake, but it around there. They're saying now, you have to upgrade your, um, system at a certain amount of, or be selling that, be done. And they're doing it, you go in their yard, because they don't have any yard. All you see is just a, a above-ground septic system, now that's probably what they're gonna need to get away with the wetlands.
They're trying to go around, they have a little maneuver to do. But they're also, but they're always, and they never gave us a chance to talk to them.
Do they have to put an impact on, on, on traffic in there?
Yes, we don't see it. When I told Marcia, so she's aware, I'm gonna go down to the South Kingston, oh, absolutely. In fact, they put a lot of pregnant lawyers who were, they were usurping the line. They were supposed to have thirty minutes of Q and A by the resident precinct that are gonna be effective. The lawyers made sure, a lot of time, that we were never gonna get a chance to speak. At that, they had it all choreographed. Any witnesses they said had a choreographed answer or report to say yes or no. The lawyer, the main attorney was saying, is it true that, I was looking at a TV report, is it true that you are this and that, and you want to see no impact? And all they had to do was say that. The other, the other people would, then they would, they would think about their own credentials. The new person that talked for them was about seventy-three or twenty-four witnesses. Start off by a long, five or ten minute dialogue of discussion on their credentials. Oh, this is my degree, this is, this is my experience. You can up the volume, so we can never... So, we feel that this is all gonna be a traffic nightmare. And something is sort of involved in this, back at the residence, along Stony Ford and Plantation, possibly top level. There's not many problems down to the railroads. I guess the people way down there, but, you know, this is, Old North Road is a heavily traveled area. Anyway, that was what I was gonna follow up.
It's, it's going to be a nightmare, I think. If that gets to, if it starts getting developed. I mean, it's already a nightmare there now with the, with the traffic. Because I, when I, when I left after all, all the parents supposedly already entered the academy, just to get through the road, there was wall to wall cars. Here we go.
Okay, new business, item B, annual Christmas tree lighting, roughly.
Okay, so we, we do it the Thursday, Tuesday, so we use seven two this year?
Seven one?
Two. Um, you know, I'm gonna try, I am trying, gonna try to get cookies from Docor, I'm not sure, um, of the editor. They usually give us a really good deal, but if they don't, then I'll go to Plain Bay. And so, it might be more money.
Okay, you get a motion?
Yeah.
We did it last year. No, we, we did a virtual, didn't we? Yeah.
And I think six people watched.
Yeah, well, need to get it on a webpage. We also, we also did a food drive.
Yes, oh, yeah?
Yeah, we were talking with Jessica last week, was it last week that we talked about that?
Bring a can of food.
So, make that part of an announcement, but, you know.
Okay.
You need a tree.
A tree. Yep, we already have the stuff.
Yeah, I need a tree, I got plenty of big ones for you.
Open this for school. As usual, get some ice, hot chocolate.
Any other questions? You can be an elf.
Then, do you have confirmation for the school on singers?
No, I gotta arrange that.
I'll need to know.
I'm just being hesitant, because who knows what we can do, you know, who's doing what because of COVID.
I'll be outside.
Well, I know, but, you know, I don't know what they're doing at the school, if they're even practicing. They have some, they do music, they, they have music course. So, we just, we'll, we'll go together.
Okay, uh, next up, item F, annual employee appreciation lunch. Let's hear it again.
Well, this is something council does for the employee, um, staff every year, which we greatly appreciate. We usually do it around, we're looking at, on a Tuesday, so we catch everybody we can. So, we're looking at December fourteenth this year.
BJ's?
No. No, um, we'll check the local restaurant this year, I think.
Was it cornstarch?
Yeah. They don't do K and R, we'll have to do it.
We'll fry that too.
We've done that one. We've done, we overdid days.
Okay, any other questions on the lunches?
Did you wish to make a motion to approve, uh...
Yeah, because we pay, we pay for that out of the contingency, so.
No, council.
Council contingency, yeah, yeah. Uh, make a motion to, for the council contingency fund to pay for the annual employee appreciation lunches.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, new business, item G, Mike, because you put this on, consideration of purchase of property by town for recreation purposes.
So, I saw a, uh, bill, sent out a correspondence about a, I believe it's federal funds fifty-fifty match. I've been dealing with these grants for decades, and the town has to have, I believe, its portion put aside for an application to be considered complete. So, I thought it would be a good idea to discuss it, at least, about possibly, uh, if there was ever a, uh, apostle in town that we thought was a good idea, uh, that we maybe should start trying to budget some money to put aside for that fifty-fifty, that you're hoping to have.
This one, number eleven.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Now that's something.
The land trust.
Well, that's something that would have to be discussed at the budget hearings.
Yeah.
And there's also some specific language on purchases with that land trust that was written. Because I went back and forth for over a year and looked at that, so. That's something to do.
Yeah, I think probably, and maybe I grew up, Mike's probably thinking of a line item, possibly a capital improvement thing. As you said, Dan, for budget time, to be able to start a fund of some kind for purchase of recreational property. I think is that what you were thinking of starting to set some money aside?
When I read it, I just thought, you know, I read positive comprehensive plan that's in existence. And it talked about the town being proactive to perhaps purchase areas for recreation or conservation or something like that. That's where I first got there. Then I saw that memo from Bill, and it makes sense to at least talk about it. See if we can, maybe decide a plan for it.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Well, just a moment, when I read November eleven, this was also on October. A different correspondence showed my house. So going back to the disc golf in the lumber area. I read in the minutes of the land trust that, you contacted Janelle that they were interested in putting hiking trails in there. So I contacted her, I'm gonna meet with them on seventeen at the library, on the fifteenth. It's the same night as the zoning board appeals meeting, yeah?
Is it eighteen?
Eighteen, yeah. And then possibly write for the grant on behalf of, I'll bring it back to the town if I, if we can fill the obligation. So it would be to, you know, increase the playground, the hiking trails, the golf course, and upgrade the area. It'll take a lot of work and maybe a lot of money, so. But I saw, I looked at what the grants were giving out, and there was hundreds of thousands of dollars given to municipalities for recreation purposes, with baseball fields. And we were, you know, so.
Okay. Unfinished business, A, status, transfer station purchase.
Moving along, hopefully by end of month we'll have something, party for lunch room. We'll be pulling on the same order.
You gonna kick something?
No, actually, no, I think it's kickstart, and I think you're working on the same page. So I'm hoping that we won't have to come back with another extension, but, you know, that has not been history. But we are moving along, we really are.
Let's see, unfinished business, item B, discussion charter changes, financial term meetings.
It was on the work session, we gave it a draft, I don't know whether you wanna keep it on the work session. Because we're starting soon with the budget. We could talk about it further.
Okay.
Do you want to keep on this agenda?
Hmm?
On this agenda, please?
I don't know, it's up to the council if we need to keep it on the, whether we keep it on a work session or a budget agenda.
Well, I mean, we can still talk about it, but eventually it might need to come back here for us to do. I would leave it, I honestly would leave it, but each, we haven't had a chance to discuss it further in a work session. We can leave it.
Jim, you didn't have a copy of this, did you?
What's that?
No, no, because it was at a work session we gave it off, so I don't need that for you tomorrow. You got one in five, or? In the work session, did you?
Is that, this is the sole thing that you put together, but you got an awful lot more papers than that.
Well, it's a lot of backup work.
Oh, oh. Yeah, well, that's, well, backup work is good, you keep the backup work.
You heard the lawyer, he needs his.
Yeah, I think he needs evidence.
Well, that's all good, you wanna just keep it on the work session?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to get. What money you giving it to? I got you.
But there's a work session versus the unfinished business. I'd like to just keep it here and we'll just not deal with it, you know, until maybe a few months from now if we're ready. I think it's worth looking at.
What's the, what's the point of waiting? Why can't we just finalize it and then?
Well, if you're going forward. More specifically, just summarize your comments. If everybody has comments, just send them to me, I'll summarize them, give them to everybody, and then when we have to.
Just do a special meeting and just hang you right out?
Yeah.
I mean, I think the numbers are basically the biggest, for me, the biggest issue around people. You know, a percentage of what we.
That was just the very first attempt. I mean, the half hour, I'm a little concerned about that half hour after start time, just because the line could be long. And sometimes we don't stop at twenty past seven-thirty anyways, and that's.
Well, even when you tell people, get there at six-thirty, quarter, or seven, because there's a line, they show up at seven.
Well, we can make it an hour. That's a comment, that's a good idea, make it an hour, and that way we, we're definitely waiting long enough.
Okay, school that, I don't have to do a work session this month, the holiday.
No, we'll stop after the evening, okay?
I'll find out, we have that question ready for the state.
Yeah, it's gonna be, well, probably the least, maybe a job ago that I could do it. So we should have a hearing, hearings to do. Yeah, we should have, yeah. All right, we should, if we're gonna do something, we should do a spring hearing.
We're gonna hear it back, so. Okay. Item C, status, Whitrock Mobile Park Electrical Issues.
We'll also look at any letter about the road too, so.
Did we set up that? We. Try, try.
Okay. Because this was pulled from license renewals, and my feeling is, I've been reading about the same issues here going back to the eighties. The electrical, the road is actually a mess, why are we looking at? So I think it's time we, I'm gonna make a motion to deny the license until everything is upgraded and fixed to the satisfaction of the inspectors. That's up there for this guy.
I'll get that.
But like I said, I can literally, I can remember the late eighties, reading the South County section of this journal bulletin, and it was the same issues, so.
So what happens to the people that are living there?
That's his problem.
What about the people that are living there? What, what?
Well.
Do they get addicted? What happens?
Good question. I know, I've got a piece of rental property. If those people lose their power or they lose their will, I gotta go over and take care of them. Or I gotta put them in a hotel.
Like, who's going to enforce that, though? That's where this town, you know, we don't have the.
The thing is, you're to a point, Adam, where you, have you written in there?
I've been in there.
Have you been in there the last month, after all the heavy rains?
I was in there.
No.
I was afraid of that.
Don't go in there at five.
I've been in there, you know, twenty-five years ago, it was horrible.
I hear the people are very nice. I was told that, there it was.
I have a question. I was recently told by a friend whom I was speaking, that there is a statute fairly new that indicates that an unlicensed facility might then become the town's responsibility.
George, love to see that statute, I have not seen so far.
Well, I hope that's not, I mean.
It's not my exact area of expertise, so I have.
Well, I hope that's not the case.
I'd have to look at that cap.
Well, I understand, I, would you, would you mind checking into that?
Have you looked at that thing?
Someone that I happen to be speaking with who actually has had some clients that have dealt with issues in that part. And I said, "Wait, wait, wait just a minute, say that again, now I don't have a copy or anything." But Jim, would you just check into that? He said he was not aware of this.
Right on top of my hit list. No, I'm serious, it's a.
No, so going back to your motion, Dan, I don't, I understand the frustration, I am too. I don't, yeah. What if, I was gonna say, what if we delay this particular one for a month? I know that means that we'll go unlicensed for a few days until Jim can come back and tell us something about it, Dan?
I'll, I'll give him one month, but like I said, I mean, you get the same excuses that we get.
Yeah, Dan, no, I agree, but what I'm saying is this.
Research it.
Well, no, but this, this actual license expired at the end of November, am I right? So basically, if we postpone to December, it will be a week unlicensed, and then we'll check it in December.
Okay.
But in the meanwhile, I mean, if, if, if what I was told was the case, let's assume it's not, and then.
Can I withdraw my motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Wait for a second. And new motion?
Well, I move that we postpone consideration, delay consideration of this application until the December meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next, item D, public meetings, live streaming, video conferencing.
Excuse me, before we move on, as a part, and this doesn't have to be part of the motion, but I wonder if we can direct either Madam Clerk or our attorney to indicate that this is an action they've taken and we're postponing it to be considered. Yeah, would maybe, Lynn, would you do that and indicate there was discussion of, you know, of, what would we say?
Denying. Writing a letter to the owner, yeah.
Yeah, discussion of denying, and we postponed consideration for one month.
Can I just ask Lynn also copy Public Gothon, which is contacted the entire media.
Sort of a housekeeping issue, but I think that should be done, so we have a record of it. Okay, Lynn? All right, sorry, Dan.
Public meetings, live streaming, and video conferencing, nothing due to report.
Well, I don't know if it's on me anymore, but, because the discussion was, were we gonna try it out the library first? The TVs are, the electrician, Steve, you know about the electrician yet? Is it this week or next week?
He's coming this week.
This week. To hook up all the cameras and microphones and all that, so. Give it a week or so, go down and see if it's something else.
I was in the room last week. It was, had been up, I'd seen it up, it was in use a couple Saturdays ago. Then I was in the room up there last week, and it was down off the wall. Did it fall off the wall, Steve? I'm just kidding.
We had to have it down off the wall so the electrician can come in and do the insulation of the recess box.
I thought that was.
Cat, chimney, and cable and power.
I assumed that was the issue, I didn't think it fell off. So can we continue this discussion as well? I think it's.
Yeah, we can on that.
I know, I think it's important we consider it.
It's gonna tie into the disc golf course and.
Driving movies. Okay, item B, status, Department of Environmental Management noticed violations, County Road one seventy South County Trail. We have nothing due to report here, and I'm gonna make a motion to strike this off there over here back to these people in the justice protective section.
Jim, you've had communication, this is correct.
Yeah, I'll be happy to address it under solicitor's report if something comes in. And then if it's something appropriate for executive, I'll state that.
Okay.
I guess I gotta make a motion to remove status, Department of Environmental Management noticed a violation, County Road one seventy-five, South County Trail. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. F, October Communication number eleven, letter from Marcia Sahigian, concerns regarding Plantation Drive. It is parked by parents and children attending Kingston Hill Academy.
So this is on last month's councilable letter to the school and the academy, asking them to let us know what their plan is going to be for addressing this issue. We haven't heard back, but you did have another letter from another neighbor today.
Doesn't want signs.
Doesn't want signs, I don't think, she got that idea that we're gonna have signs.
It was discussed, maybe you won't hear that.
Maybe not. So credit to my side.
Would you mind if we engage Skoda on this matter for a few minutes? Because, Skoda, I know you told me when you were there, you spent some time on Plantation Drive.
I spent six times there, I went up there between three and three-thirty, six different occasions, where I encountered, the first day I didn't see any cars, second day, there was like one parked there. They were only parked there maybe between five and ten minutes. The second day, third day, there was two cars, and then the last three days, there was nobody there. But I met Marcia, she spoke with me. She was out there trying to hand flyers to the people, and I guess when they saw me, I guess that was discouraging people from parking there because most of them were driving by me, turning around and going back out and not parking at all. The last two days that I left around three-thirty and headed back down Stony Fort toward the academy, I noticed that now that they added South Kingston, police officer actually directing traffic, having the buses get out of the academy. Parking lot, so.
That's pretty much what I see going on in Kingston, because like, I was doing a job in Saunders Town Hamilton Elementary. I'm lost in that road, I'm talking over a hundred cars, because no one wants their kid to ride the bus anymore. We don't have it that bad over there.
No, but you do have the traffic coming from URI, Compass, and the academy.
There's no rule on Stony Ford anymore.
No, there isn't. It's just, I mean, when I was driving through to leave, I was in, I was in traffic, I was, you know. Especially when you get down to that intersection where you try to turn left onto Slocombe Road, to get out of there. It's just, it's just a lot of cars there during that time period.
URI kids use that as a back way to go to school for years, so.
Well, they use Exeter Road to Railroad Ave, to Slocombe Road, you know, and they cut through. And now that they paved Exeter Road, they're flying through, they've already got a couple of complaints, people are flying through Exeter.
I don't worry, they're taking radar out there every day, so.
I know, I know, I know North Kingston's out there, yeah.
Okay, may I speak to this, here, we have the communication of November eighth. And she's indicating, the lady of concern here has indicated two kinds of signs. She speaks of no public parking, I didn't think that was a good idea before, I still don't. And I think we just got a communication from a lady who lives there, who wanted a sign. And I sent this back, if somebody's having a house party or entertaining people. You just can't tell people not to park on the street. But the same woman also suggests a sign that which would do probably no good, except to say no through traffic for anybody else who might think that Plantation Drive takes them somewhere, it's not school related. But Steve, I'd like to ask you, are there any rules here? Do you have any no through traffic signs or anything like that?
We do. Council approved no through trucking on Somland Hopkins Hill Road years ago. We have no parking on the side of Yagul Valley because of the width of the road. You take Plantation Drive, it's thirty feet, it's curb to curb, or even probably gutter line to gutter line on that one, even a little wider. There's no problem if a car, a ten, parked along the side of that road for impeding traffic in any way. So it's not a hazard to have those cars parked there for a short period of time.
Excuse me, as a resident of that street, do you have a sign that says no outlet, which many.
Means you can't, it doesn't go anywhere, no outlet.
Which means, I think that does have more of an impact on driving.
Well, that's what I would say, that's what I'm just suggesting, no through traffic or no outlet is either better.
It's, no outlet's already there.
No, it's a dead, says dead end.
Dead end, same, same.
Well, no outlet is a bit scarier to people. I mean, if you go in, you may not be able.
We have both in town, no outlet as well as dead ends.
So she and I talked, she was, regrets she couldn't make it tonight, and we thought no outlet would be great. It's a little more of a deterrent because no. And we thought no outlet would be great, it's a little more of a deterrent because no outlet is a bit vague. Like, if you go in, will you ever get out? You know, you might get lost. But, and finally, I'm sorry to interrupt, but she was unable to make it, it was personal matters. The, the other impact is, what you've probably seen was the development of around fifty residences at that corner of Old North Road and Stony Fort. I've lived there since nineteen eighty-one on Plantation. And I've never seen such a visual impact. I went to the original South Kingston downtown meeting down on High Street in Hayfield. And it was a dog and pony show by the fancy lawyer attorneys who gave no, none of the public a chance to speak. So they're railroading this through and it's bigger than you think. And so the traffic, which Sergeant Miller pointed out, you've got URI traffic, the Compass School and the Kingston Hill Academy, gonna be now converging at similar, roughly the same time of the day. They have what we're concerned about, where is South Kingston's traffic study on this?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is a South Kingston development, is it in South Kingston?
No.
They, no, well, this is not an answer.
It's on North Road, it's right on the town line, I'm very familiar with that piece of property.
What is your name, sir?
Andrew Davis.
Well, no, but it's, what he's speaking of is in South Kingston, am I right?
And it's, Slocombe Road is Exeter, is that correct? So it's impacting there.
Well, one side of Slocombe Road is North Kingston, the other side is.
One side of Slocombe is Exeter, the other half is North Kingston.
In any case, we're both towns are being affected. Also, how about on Stony Fort going for the railroad track? I see a sign that says entering Exeter on Stony Fort headed to the railroad track, so.
Way down at the bottom of the hill, there's a little piece of Exeter.
Well, halfway down, yeah. But, so it's, but as, will be impacted, that's all we're saying, will be impacted by this tremendous traffic.
Can I go back to my original suggestion of, I still have no through, is there a sign that says, what was the other language?
No outlets, no outlet.
We have, I believe we even have that in stock. But we can swap the sign out from dead end to no outlet, that's not.
Does it say dead end?
People parking to pick up their kids, what difference does it make?
Like I said, the road's wide enough, but it's not a true impact, it's only for a few minutes.
Well, we have university people coming in that don't know the street. When we first moved there, there were fraternities coming in stealing stuff, breaking into cars and all that. So no outlet, we think, has a good impact.
Maybe not this issue, but maybe in general we're saying that.
Yes, in general, but I think it impacts this as well.
That, that was my point, I don't think no outlet, it's not necessarily affect the Kingston Hill Academy, but it might give something with some of the unwanted traffic.
And speaking of the other issue, she already has a letter back from the head of, the director of Kingston Hill Academy. And he's sympathetic to our request about the parking and I think that's gonna move forward. I think they're gonna change the way they let cars and buses in and out.
Okay, so. We're gonna put a, we're gonna put a sign there, Steve?
I, I'll switch, like I said, now there's a dead end, I'll just switch it with a no outlet, that's not a problem.
All right.
But I believe we have one.
All right. Do we need to keep this on the agenda?
No. I would, I would move it, we would move it.
Okay, I'll second your motion, Cal. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, item G, discussion of possible actions, whether it be rescue plan, active, or. Last week. Last week, myself, Maria, Lynn and Ron met here to come up with some ideas on expanding the town hall to the city here, and council meeting appointment walls, something was filed. Everybody should do that.
Is it this?
Yeah.
You want this?
Yeah, you got that on, on the back. And what we discussed is, right off that end, twenty-six by sixty. And we're up in here about over here now, correct?
It's either over there or just right here, if you build that.
We build that, Ron, do that a little bit on that end.
Do that, and either that works.
Okay. And actually, this number's a little low, I was telling Ron, maybe tonight you better add a lot of fifty to it. But today, Ron had a meeting with an architect, so we're getting an architect involved to get, because, because it's federal funds, it's gonna have to be prevailing wage, so that's what we're gonna try and toss up. Me and Ron were, oh, on that deck, this roof is a disaster. So we figure, give the whole roof over too. And me and Ron both noticed, we knew the roof was leaking over there. Someone took expandable foam and went all the way down the peak, so I guess the water was leaking on Dixie's desk. And they put the expandable foam down the peak, now the water leaks on Bill's desk.
So, yeah, that's it. Yeah, so it happened on Dixie's desk, they foamed it and it traveled and then ended on Bill's desk, they foamed it. We had so much rain and wind this weekend, it leaked on Dixie's desk, so today, this weekend. So there was one paper that she had, luckily it was, it has ruined her key lock though, I don't know that. She had a five hundred one.
So, you, you said Ron's gonna have prices for the next meeting?
So, well, the office said in maybe about a month, I don't know if you'll have it.
So now we have about six hundred and forty thousand over nine hundred thousand?
The architect said six, I said seven. Yeah. And it's what, nine hundred thousand?
It should, by, by, by the time this all said, it should be a million, which is a million one, right around there.
That you're getting in funding.
Yes, we've got the nine hundred thousand, it's in a separate account, I mean, first.
And then Maria's had requests. I don't know if an individual called you last week, he called me in Calvin.
I wasn't here.
Wanted money, and he wasn't polite.
What do you mean?
And Frank, Frank would return the call, so. So, and.
Occasional greeting on my cell, maybe that's why.
And got all the girls in the office mad at each other themselves. See, I noticed he left, so.
Well, I didn't make a move, but I spoke to him.
And Maria's been getting phone calls, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna do this for about a month, you want a little month?
Three weeks, something like that, I would say.
There's certain stipulations to get some of this money, there's grants, ideas and what, you put your idea in. Someone's looking for some funding, you have to put your funding idea in right with cost estimates. You need a justification of how there was a harm to you from COVID and how this will help remedy the harm caused for COVID and.
Because that's where we have to justify to the state.
That's what has to be justified to the state, so we need to, I don't know, put it on the bed page or.
Or cough a lot at these meetings.
What's that?
Or cough a lot at these meetings.
So, I don't know, Ken, you know, way you, probably easiest.
Probably fill an application out, maybe just advertise on the everything else, put it on a whiteboard.
Is there a requirement to do a weekly, you're not required to even do this, are you?
No, 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 I'm just suggesting as a, in case we get flooded with a lot of different ideas.
I think you should make it as much a public input as you can, though.
There has to be some component of public participation.
I have a public hearing.
A public hearing.
On one Saturday afternoon meeting somewhere, but it doesn't have to be a council meeting, Maria can put it on.
Yeah, there's a shot, I worked on five.
And also, I talked to Maria also, you know, for the DEM grant and upgrade the recreation facilities down there, I think that's a good opportunity to put some money in here.
What, the library?
The playground. The walking trail, the whole project.
Well, I should think especially if it's an outside activity, because doesn't that promote better health and rather than into it? I don't know, just.
If you use it.
I don't see.
Ah, what is this gonna be, like a notice or suggestions?
No, I would, I would just say that any suggestions that come in should not be considered unless, and if something comes in, you just ask them, you know, for. No?
No, no, I'm just wondering how a proposal is, notice is suggestion or is?
Town webpage.
No.
Probably easiest.
What do you want me to know, a notice or suggestions or?
There's not be a template out there to be able to misbalance these, because they're doing it in every other one.
They're not giving the choice. I don't think so, I don't think they're gonna, some are not, some are not giving the public, because I get inundated with ideas, but.
Oh, I'll find them.
Okay. So we'll be there on there for the next one. Okay. Number eleven, reports of offices, boards and committees, a, some kind of secret report.
I just was asked, well, we're talking about the sign, we had a conversation, I don't know how it led into it at the work session, or the special meeting, about public notification for a sign out front. It didn't make it a agenda item, so under my report, I'm just bringing up conversation, you know, how do you wanna move forward with the conversation? Lynn wasn't here, so she doesn't know what we're talking about.
Bet she does now.
But the whole point being, it was just a large, like, what we just talked about, the notice, where you put a notice, we're hiding maybe the notice.
Change the sign.
Pat, we'll change the sign, I'll find it. So, I don't know.
What are the zoning ordinances from the sign?
Yeah. But we have a pretty big sign out there now, so I don't think it's not. It's like a, it's four by six, like four, I don't know, four by eight.
I don't have.
You talking about the active side?
Yeah.
We talked about last one. That's a great idea, because if we're having a fundraiser that can be out there, we're having a financial town meeting or anything that's going on in the town. Thousands of people are driving by and they'll see the sign. That's a great idea.
You just can't put little, little electric ones.
Yeah.
So you did.
You can put an electric sign, you gotta put the comment, put the letters.
I need everybody else and everything, so, take on another duty.
Exactly, show us your cash.
All right, well, we'll, put it on the next agenda, so.
On the next agenda?
Yeah, go ahead, you can yell at me for the next month, but.
But, but can I just suggest, let's put it on the agenda and let's see if, I mean, there are probably places where you could purchase such things. I mean, you know, like professional, that's what I mean. Can you do a little research? And the other thing outside here, without discussing if they change the sign, I was looking outside a couple of times thinking, well, what spot? There's a great spot where there's a beautiful tree in front of all school, which would be a great spot, but the trees there. So we're not gonna cut a tree to put a sign, so I'm not really.
Well, the other issue, you got the site distance too, when you're going out of that road, when you have this parking lot.
Well, I wouldn't, well, I wouldn't, Dan, I wouldn't have a sign erected so that people would.
Well, that's what I mean, it's gonna, I look, it's gonna be tough to find a spot to put it where it doesn't interfere.
Saying that.
We used to have a sign out here at the end of the, right with the mailboxes, they wrecked it.
Yeah, well.
That's why there's, there goes this bullet board here that works pretty well, but the sign that was out there had a nice little overhang all over it and everything, they wrecked it.
Well, and that's gonna happen with any, any initiative that we take, I'm sure, but, I mean, it was a thought, anyway, I'd like to discuss that. I just remember at the entrance to, I'm sorry, East Greenwich High School, there was a big board, so that anybody coming and going could see what things were happening, that's a good point about who took care of it.
Yeah, they had maintenance people.
Probably did. We have Steve and his crew, all right, have Mike, can we just have Jim, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm pointing to Ken. Now I'm looking at, looking at Jim, but pointing at Ken, can we just have Ken do a little?
What do you want my sign, Jim?
No, no Jim, Ken, can we have Ken? Just see if you can find anything.
I think we're getting tired.
No, it's all right, let's, no Jim, I said Ken, I said Jim, but I don't want to get you.
That's what you can do when you're tired.
No.
I almost had to run to the bathroom.
No.
Chuckle therapy, you guys need chuckle therapy, you'll avoid.
I'm trying, well. Point Jim.
Okay. Moving on, solicitors report, Jim.
Very busy month, but nothing for me to talk about in particular in executive session, once again, same mantra, if anybody ever has any questions, I'm in, I don't have. No one hasn't seen, picked up the phone, give me a call, be happy to discuss it.
Okay, next one.
Wait, wait, can I just ask you, you, Jim?
Yes, sir.
But, well, you, you passed through this issue of the local code, code enforcement, should we put that on the agenda or something like that?
If you want to, I mean, I got that letter out of Hayfield from the Attorney General saying, here's what we're not gonna do anymore, here's what the town can do.
I know, I'm not happy, I'm not happy having another responsibility, so should we just let it go for the time being?
I just passed it on because it was sent to me, that's, that's, I see that as the newest thing. They send something to the town solicitor and then they leave it on your, on your step and it's.
Well, they should have sent it to Ken, so that they send it to you instead, just kidding.
That would be something for a work session, I would definitely discuss at some point.
All right, reports.
Just me.
Reports removed from consent agenda, the only one is you, Cal, exit the public library.
Well, I just wanted to speak to the library quickly, but then, Ken, did you have anything, Ken? Ken, anything that they should have brought, like.
I already called, fine. So, Chairwoman Grant coming out that the director, Ken, he brought to the board that Steve is gonna work.
Really?
Steve's gonna get us some kind of idea on what the roof would cost, what the replacement of the HVAC system would cost. And Ken's having Alco go down there to give him a price on the windows and doors, with, you know, they need Ken to work. And to apply a chairman foundation group, the last time they gave us money, they gave us a considerable amount to build this one. And we haven't asked them for anything since then, so it's a good opportunity, we can get quite a bit of money.
And I, I, thanks, Ken, I just removed it, just to, once again, make a public announcement that at the library, there's a startup senior group right now, once a month, just to see what the interest might be and there's some discussion of what could happen. And it's right now, this coming Thursday, first Thursday of November and first Thursday of December, and it's just whoever comes, we're gonna discuss and evaluate and see. But we've got Jessica DiMartino and a little bit, just, he's got some senior programs and it's just. And one of, one, one of the items I removed in communication has to do with senior tax assistance, which is something that's come up already. So I just wanted to tell you that there's a senior group that's in a fledgling stage. That's all.
Okay, number twelve, other administrative issues, Mike, you have some questions?
Yes, so they had a, a, from Jim Rusak, on October twenty-sixth, an email referencing lead hazard violations, lead hazard code enforcement. And that, it talked about perhaps appointing somebody or having somebody as like a point guard for communication with them. And it mentioned Ron as a possible person, ability inspector, it seems like the logical thing, do we need to do anything with that? Do we need to ask him?
Only wish, Mike, and, and that's something I think that you probably would want to discuss in a work session sometime.
That's what I was just asking Jim about like a few minutes ago. Thought you were, because you were focused on the.
So what session?
They tried several years ago to buy us off, to try to give us money to get involved in that program, because it's difficult, everybody that comes in.
Thing is, it's already regulated at the federal, state level.
Every application that comes into the building inspectors, if you took the money, has to have a lead certification attached to it, which we don't have the ability to do.
What the AG was saying was, we do this, but you can if you want to, so tell us who it is you want to have do that, that way. It would have to do, and that's the way I read it, to tell you, I might be wrong, but that's why I suggested a work session. But I think that's a typical way to basically take work off their day. Put it on ours? Might be wrong, maybe.
No, that's what, last time they were giving us money.
Well, they, they, we don't put it on a work.
Well, then, maybe we don't put it on a work session, we just leave it alone.
Right.
Let's just leave it alone.
It was like when they wanted us to change the streetlights, and then they would take them over.
I got a call from Karen Pitch two weeks ago about streetlights, and I was laughing at her. Because they're doing the same thing again.
Communications.
Okay, another administrative issue. Okay, communications, uh, number one we took care of. Seven, I think you had seven, Mike.
Yeah.
This was the lawsuit for the opioids, five billion dollars, encouraging towns to sign up.
Yeah, Mike, if I can just address that one? That was something that hit, hit the town's desk a couple of years ago, if I recall, and the, I, I can't remember who exactly looked into it, but since there were no, we had no police department, no town, um, fire or, uh, rescue, which was within the municipal budget, therefore, uh, the termination was made, there was really no, um, the town has to prove eventually what, what, um, uh, facility was used within the town to address opioid problems that are occurring, since we did not have that type of infrastructure that just about every other town has.
Not applicable.
There was not, yeah, there was a decision not to pursue that, so, uh, we never did, we're one of the communities that did not put that in. I think it was Stefan was involved in looking at that, um, and he came back and said, basically, we did think it was around to the town to get involved, so they had it.
And the eight was the plantation drive, we already discussed that. Number 11 was the land purchase, did we already discuss that enough? Number 11?
Yeah. And then we got number 13.
13 and 18.
Was initiated by.
By.
Here's the, the cerulo, you'll see it tonight, and it also included the audience for us to read, that I read, and that's a, I think we have a son of ordinance or, say again, we have a son of ordinance, as you've mentioned, or somebody mentioned it here, why not have a, actually, it was a beautiful town, and we should have, we should protect it, some stuff like this.
If I may, Honorable Counselor. I just, most, thanks for putting it at the end of the agenda, I got to do my homework, and unfortunately, that means I'll be sending you guys all a bunch of homework to read, uh, only because this is a global issue with respect to large scale, it's not just, uh, it, it's not just local, okay, remember the old saying, think globally, act locally? This issue of large scale greenhouse light pollution is huge globally, and, uh, by chance, Lisa Davis sent me something, uh, to look at, I looked at it, I had a contact, a guy in Poland, who would initially sent something to him, too full paid, but eventually, after all that contact time, okay, I got, I got the story on where that photograph that had been floating around town had come from, because everybody wanted to know, but it thought it was fear mongering, it was too old, all of that stuff. I've got five or six good articles, uh, the photographs of actual places throughout the globe, a lot of problem up in Canada, with the marijuana grows up there, parts of Eastern Europe, Russia, the, the Netherlands, so it, it's not simply saying, and, and from what I read so far, it's not simply saying you put blackout curtains up, okay? Each geography has a different situation, each climate has a different situation, so if you're gonna control it, it's not simply a matter of, on the large scale stuff, saying, we're gonna put blackout curtains up. No, the dark skies initiative is another whole layer of it, so my thought, when we started talking about this among the folks who have been interested in this stuff, was let's establish what we would find to be, um, not conducive to Exeter's rural, okay, character, and then at the same time, make sure that it's, there's, there's nothing in the way that gets done, it's gonna make it possible for a large scale greenhouse, whatever that means, to sidetrack it, do something with it that would really be a big time problem, huge. I, I don't know where you take it from here, but it's gonna be a problem if we don't do something with it. That's my take on it, I'll be happy to give you the fruits of the research. I wish I hadn't gotten this phone call about three months ago about coming to some kind of a public hearing on this stuff.
I would, I, I'd rate it with interest, for sure, um, and I share your concerns, Mike, I think you realize that, I would, I would certainly, I don't know if we can do something with it tonight, I would.
I wasn't expecting that.
No, 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 well, what I mean is, not us did something, but we could, here's what I'd like to suggest, that we forward this communication to the planning board with a memorandum random from Ross indicated, we wish them to give this, uh, kind of high priority and, and consideration for re-read, review and recommendations to us regarding something of this type for us to consider.
Well, I'm gonna sit here and wait and see if and when they're gonna come back with proposed ordinance for these greenhouses, and then make a site specific, because.
Well, well.
Look, it's finished. Where I'm at, I've got electric quote in the northeast, I've got new arroy in the southeast, and then, when they're playing football, I got all the sounds, and I'm five miles away, and when I read that ordinance, it's bad, that one's bad.
This one, well, in Charleston.
Well, this one right here, first thing you do, you read that, go right over to the bedroom cemetery, tell them to take the lights off the flags.
Well.
It does not be that ordinance.
Can I point it up?
You gotta put the lights on the very top.
So, so that's why I want to, if I may, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to turn this into a debate, I'm just sharing information that seems significant, it could be a problem down the road for this prime directive of ours of maintaining the rural character of the town, period. So, one of the first quotations I ran into was, when they did the research on what kind of light was serious light pollution, pollution, they found that compared to anything else, the biggest single problem orders of magnitude more, in terms of however you measure, are large scale greenhouses, okay? So it's not about having, it's about a, a performance standard, no more than, for example, whether it's Lumen, Council, or whatever, I'm not qualified to, to, to turn all of this over on my own, but I am able to see where there are red flags, I understand enough of what's going on here, to know that we, we ought to look at it, that's all, okay? Whether that particular lan, uh, language is the right language, so that one, from what I understand of the people in Charleston, came about because they were worried about light pollution from the observatory at, uh, the Old Navy Base.
Then it got parked.
That was one of the first problems they were worried about, okay? And that's constant, that's not, you know, that's not, uh, well, when do they shut down the, when do they shut down the, the lights at the, the bedroom cemetery, you would know that better than I.
I don't know that one.
Okay, how much of it?
If you have a flag, if you leave a flag up.
Yeah.
Like, it must be eliminated.
Okay. Anyway, I'm not trying to create a problem here, I'm trying to solve a problem, or at least head it off. That language doesn't have to be the language, there's a lot more research that needs to be.
If they come back with a proposed ordinance, make them put it to their ordinance.
We should do this before anybody comes back, with the dark skies, they're not bad.
And I'd like to speak to it as well, because I never suggested verbatim that this is what we ought to consider, and if that was, if, if that was misunderstood, then I'll be correct. I'd like to refer this to the planning board and ask them to consider, and Dan, I think your comments are well taken, and, and so are Mike's, that, and some of this language is not necessarily appropriate, but let them consider what might be.
You exclude flags.
And, I will, I don't think we wait until the 11th hour, we've been doing that.
Yeah, and, and the, the other thing, going back to my background in the, in the business, in the building world, is a specification, that, that would turn it into a specification thing with one specific building, we'd be singling out one enterprise, what I feel would be the most helpful thing would be a performance set of standards, so any structure that exceeds it, anywhere in the town, for any reason.
And when we got that in the ordinance, it's on the checklist.
On light?
That's one of the major things on that checklist out there, development plan review is light, has been there for years.
Well, then that's an answer to the question, but I don't know whether that ordinance, what you, I don't know what you're describing.
We just keep, while I'm throwing more and more rules and regulations out there, there's, I was telling Jim on the phone the other day, Charleston, seven years ago, tried to pass an ordinance regulating the color of mulch. Because people were complaining about mulch, I mean, it's, it's just, you just get to a limit of rules, you know, so.
Can we get a copy of what that is?
It never, it never went anywhere, it failed.
Yeah, that's what I'm at, that, that we have here.
Oh, it's, it's in, it's in the subdivision rules, dev, development plan, you go, see Bill, we'll pull it out, so, it's on the checklist.
I'd love to see it.
What's it called?
What is book?
Subdivision regs Checklist.
And it'll be in there?
Need it to not be this thick.
That's one of the things on their checklist.
We have to discuss, like, the agriculture that is outside of that checklist, like, is agriculture outside of that checklist?
Whenever that checklist was developed, which I suspect was more than a couple of years ago, some of the issues that the town is currently facing probably weren't being faced at that point, and, and if everything that's in here is already addressed, and I'd say, aren't we ahead of the game, I don't see anything wrong with passing this along and asking for it to be considered, not as a verbatim adoption, but to consider issues here.
Again, based on my reading of what's already out there, this thing started showing up on the radar when LEDs came into use in these things, apparently because they're that much more powerful, so it gives them that much more light to use in the large scale development, so it's LED technology that's also surfaced this over the last 2014 to 16 is when it first got on the radar, I'm looking at, I'm looking at articles and studies from 2020, 2021, January 2021 was one of them, so it may very well be that, Mr. Ellis is talking about it, it may be that our standards on the checklist relate to fluorescents or whatever else might be out there, compared to what LEDs can do, and I, again, I'm not a lighting engineer, but these are questions that seem to me to be worth taking a look at, the Honorable Counsel's got the responsibility, I don't, but I'll be happy as a citizen to send the information along.
I believe I made a motion, or did I not?
We just, um, we didn't really make the motion.
I, I, I would move that we forward this to the planning board and ask for them to consider its contents relative to our current regulations. How's that language?
Can we add, can we amend that?
Compared to our current regulations?
Can, can we do that, can we say, uh, compare it to our current subdivision major development checklist?
It's in the, we have to ask Bill exactly.
Why wouldn't we send it to the planning board, it doesn't want to have the checklist?
Motion on the table, so I can.
Sorry.
So the motion is to forward to the planning board, um, so we can review the contents relative to our current regulations.
That works.
That's what I said, it's pre-made, pre-grad, but let them look at it and see, and we'll all draw up to Bill and everybody else and say, there's a checklist, is this, is there anything else we need to look at?
Oh, I, I know it's in there, because I've gone through, it's like, I think every single town has that on their checklist now, the other way.
I believe you, Dan, I believe you.
It's been around 15, 12 years.
Well, this, yeah, this, this new technology has, but that's another issue.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mike, that. Number 14, Internal Revenue Service Request For Volunteers To Help People Lead A Free Act Competition.
I don't know if Mike did that, I did.
Well.
I did it, and you know what, I was so focused on getting help for seniors, and when I read, when I read it, it's help for everyone, uh, but I don't know that we have that, but I, I was just gonna let you know that I would, I'm gonna refer this to, uh, senior group too, but I just thought maybe I could refer it to Jessica only because she's out looking for volunteers and things, there might be somebody that wants to help people.
I think I voted it to her, but.
Did you?
You did.
Did you? Okay.
So what's that?
That's fine, okay. I just wanted to make a note that there's, it's a suggestion that if any people want to volunteer, and I think it's great for a retired person, that's fine, yes, it's not daily, but some people do.
Okay. That's it, isn't it? We don't give you any second session, sir?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Thank you, Mike.
Any motion to go to executive session for executive personnel issues?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.